It's great to see such a good turnout on such a rainy day here in Placer County. Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. It is just after 9:00 AM and we will start with our flag salute by supervisor, led by Supervisor Gore.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, to the one nation, in the name of the Constitution, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. And before we start, I just wanted to do a shout out to please remember to vote and to thank our election workers who are hard at work since very early this morning until late this evening and for the weeks preceding and after our elections. Our roads crew who are trying to keep our roads open and passable today. Hopefully, we're going to see a few feet of snow going up the east slope. And then finally, our maintenance crews who are keeping the water. They're up on the roof trying to keep the water out of this building. So we're thankful for all of those as well as all of our county staff. The first item on our agenda today is our consent agenda. We've had a request by Supervisor Jones to pull item 24A. Board members, are there other items that you would like pulled? Since I'm not seeing any, would I have a motion to approve? Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Is there any member of the public who would like to pull a consent calendar item? To talk or do address it?
We have one on Zoom that may be requesting mine.
Okay, we have somebody on Zoom?
Caller, can you unmute your mic? Are you asking to pull a consent item? Caller, did you want to pull a consent item?
Okay, and no one here in the room? Okay, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the remaining consent calendar items. Holmes and Wygant, and this is a roll call vote. Gore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Yep.
Holmes?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Then we'll move to item 24A, which is found on page 455 of our board packet. This is the transfer of unclaimed monies to the general fund. Supervisor Jones?
Onation on the transfer of unclaimed monies to the general fund. They're asking us to adopt a resolution directing the auditor controller to transfer unclaimed funds in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars, sixty-six cents to the general fund, fifty-one thousand, five hundred and five dollars and twelve cents, of which must be used for victim services per government code. So my question is, is the county allowed to try to reach out to these folks? That may be the people who have not claimed their funds. The reason I ask that is because I had an experience with the state comptroller, who was my tax guy for many years, said that the state would not allow them to reach out to the people whose money it was. They knew many of the people whose money it belonged to, and the state refused to allow them to reach out to those people. And so I'm just wondering, are we constricted by something similar to that? Or can county staff reach out to those folks?
Tristan, I think Tristan is.
Hi Tristan.
Good morning.
Yes, so the departments that are transferring these funds over, they do reach out.
Tristan, Tristan, excuse me, can you speak up just a bit?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yes, so the departments that are issuing these funds, they are transferring these unclaimed funds to the general fund. They do reach out and try to get the funds to the correct people. After three years, then those funds are transferred to the general fund. But we do also post it in a paper consecutively for two weeks. And then we also post it on our website to try to have people claim those funds before their transfer.
So my next question would be, is let's say that the person whose unclaimed fund was elderly and incapable, and three years and two weeks, now it's become part of the estate and the family reaches out to us to claim that unclaimed money, can they still claim that unclaimed money after three years? Does it always belong to that person, estate or family?
No, per the government code, once it's transferred to the general fund, it is supposed to stay with the general fund. At that time, that's when it's transferred over.
Did you understand that? Once it's transferred over to the general fund, it stays to the general fund? I don't.
Yes, it becomes property of, it becomes property of the county at that point, per government code.
The state cannot claim your money. I don't care how long it's unclaimed. How can the county do that?
I don't know Tristan, could you hear that?
Did you hear what I said? I don't understand how the state can take control of that money when, I mean, the county, when the state cannot take control of that money. It always belongs to the people it belongs to. I understand transferring it, but if somebody does come forward, a family member or an estate member, when it's even three.
So these aren't heirs funds, these are unclaimed funds. Typically, these are like for permits or their victims restitution that has been paid and not claimed. This isn't an heirs fund where the heirs fund is transferred to the state.
Okay, 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 now it's clear.
Yeah, these are unclaimed monies that have been put on deposit. Normally, a lot of it comes from CDR for permits that were overpaid or tried to be refunded. Those funds are transferred to the general fund, not heirs funds.
Okay Tristan, that's clear. Thank you very much for that.
Okay, is there any other questions, board members on this? Not seeing any, any public comment on this item? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, would you like to make a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the attached resolution.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Jones and Gore. And is this a roll call? No, yes, roll call on this one as well. Gore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Yep.
Holmes?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Thank you. So we'll move to the second item on our agenda. This is public comment. You have three minutes to address the board on items not on today's agenda. Understanding we can't take action today, but we can hear your comments. So go ahead and come up to the mic.
Skip Myers, resident of Placer County. Good morning, members of the board and associates. This morning, I'm reading a notice, the Eighth Declaration from New California State. And we, the people. If I can turn the pages. The State of New California Declaration of Truth, a republic. The people of California are suffering from a tyrannical state government, which fails to provide a republican form of governance, enables and supports across its southern border the invasion of the United States of America by illegal foreign nationals, and protects vicious criminals who commit outrageous acts of violence upon the citizens of America. All caused by a government of and for a monoparty system led by a tyrannical, pusillanimous dictator who openly defies federal law. California state law violates, or state, excuse me, state government, violates the United States Constitution, Article Four, Section Four, United States Constitution, Article Six, the First Amendment, and the Fourteenth Amendment. A republic. The state of California is in constitutional default and does not have constitutional standing as a member state in the union of states called the United States of America. We, the people, as citizens of the United States, living in California, are following the process of West Virginia, which successfully restored the Virginia state government after the Wheeling Conventions of eighteen sixty-one. Congress admitted California into the compact of statehood within the United States of America in eighteen fifty, because their eighteen forty-nine constitution ratified for consideration guaranteed a republican form of government. United States Constitution, Article Four, Section Four, protection of states guaranteed republican form of government. The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government. Now, following a lot of quotes from founding fathers, which make it clear the republican form of government was the only government for the United States. Quote, "When the representative body have lost the confidence of their constituents, when they have notoriously made sale of their most valuable rights, when they have assumed to themselves powers which the people never put into their hands, then indeed their continuing in office becomes dangerous to the state." Thomas Jefferson. Remember, democracy never lasts long. It soon wastes, exhausts, and murders itself. There never was a democracy yet that did not commit suicide. John Adams. Democracies have been found incompatible with personal security or the rights of property, and in general, been as short in their lives as they have been violent in their death. James Madison. Can I go on for a couple of minutes here?
Not a couple of minutes, but you can wrap up a few seconds. And also, we need your name for the record.
Skip Myers.
Thanks Skip.
Sure. Let's see. So if everyone is thinking alike, then no one is thinking Benjamin Franklin. And I'll stop there.
Thank you Skip, appreciate your comments. Good morning.
Morning. My name's Richard Ling and Joe. I would just like to thank Supervisor Gore. She has the imagination to envision the potential for new power solution. She facilitated my meeting with Roseville Power to assist with information regarding grid connection. I always try to state that Thorium Electric, my company, rejects all direct government funding. And maybe at some point, we can get the new power solution on the agenda for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Good morning. Good morning, Jennifer, Placer County. Good to see everybody this morning. I just kind of wanted to talk about what's kind of happening around the world. I was able to watch some of the EU, so the European Union talks when they were interviewing Pfizer about the shot that has come out that we forced everybody to take or they'd lose their job and all this stuff. But the Pfizer representative in that talk specifically said it never stopped the transmission. So the shot never, ever was able to stop the transmission of COVID to another person. And I think this is think about for a moment, because she also used this term called the speed of science. She said we had to move at the speed of science, which my, and I'm not a scientist, I'll be very honest about that. But most vaccine programs go through at least a minimum of a seven-year trial period, where we had to go through less than that. So I think it's really important with this upcoming season. We're already being primed for a season of RSP COVID. And now they brought the flu back this year. The flu came back. It disappeared for a few years. It's back now. And so I would really like to just bring this attention to the board, because we're going to be getting a lot of pressure from the state to re-mask. We're going to be getting a lot of pressure from the state to continue to vaccinate. And we haven't had any kind of a program where I was hearing on the radio, like eat healthy. Like if our body, like I know it for like three meetings, I talked all about this health stuff. And the whole point of that really was to just talk about, like, if the inside of our bodies are healthy, we're going to be able to not have disease come in and take in and be sick. And we just, I just don't see the programs going to really like enunciate that point to the general public. But I do see many programs coming and saying, you have to get this shot. And a lot of people did it because, you know, they didn't want, they were trying to be responsible. They didn't want to give it to somebody else. But as we're seeing in a lot of other countries now, like in Ireland, the infant mortality rate is going up from one point six percent to four point nine percent in one year. But nobody's saying why. And the sudden adult death syndromes are continuing to increase in other countries. It's up to going to be like seventeen percent of adults are going to be dead. In Australia, they think by the end of the year. But nobody's saying, was it the shot that was it? They're just saying it's a mystery. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Skip, we've already given you a chance. I good try. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, board. Jason Wedge. Try to get through this. This might be a difficult comment this morning. I'm going to name off some names. Adam Zimmer, age thirty-eight. Victoria Moody, age eighteen. Eric Ortiz, thirty. Deswanda Gori, forty-two. Luis Vega, twenty-six. Justin Tobone, twenty-two. Andrew Johnson, twenty-six. Sarah Lee, thirty. Davis Haler, Heler, twenty-two. Zach Estron, fifty-one. Ethan Force, seventeen. Troy Bodie, thirty-nine. Trevin Bell, ten. Anna Burns, sixteen. Tyler Erickson, seventeen. Ali Muhammad, seventeen. Cooper McLeod, seventeen. Abraham Romario, seventeen. Carter Stone, fifteen. Devin Williams, eighteen. Avery Gilbert, eighteen. The names I just read off to you is just a small amount of athletes that were healthy prior for taking the COVID vaccine. They have, all these names I mentioned to you are now dead. We have seen thousands of perfectly healthy people die after taking the vaccines. And the list is even bigger of the names that have had cardiac arrest or other conditions, serious issues after the vaccine. We're living in a state where a law was just passed where doctors can't even speak of COVID because it's misinformation and their license will be taken away. So where are we at here? I mean, here is a county, I look at you guys can do something about it. Here in Placer County, we still have the health official. I go get gas at the gas station. It's saying in two languages to get your vaccine. Now, I couldn't bear to write the list of all the children's names that I came across. The information is out there. And it's the white elephant in the room that nobody wants to talk about because they don't want to be labeled as a, as a conspiracy theorist. But bottom line is, people are dying here. Children are dying here. And in our community, our neighbors, our family members. And I'm just asking you guys, we need to stop this. We can keep it local. We can, local control. We can stop this at a county level. You have every, a lot of other counties and states that are speaking out against it. Doctors can't speak out against it anymore in California, but elected officials still can until there is a law that is passed that will silence your guys' voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Skip, what are you, what are we doing here?
Can I continue the rest of the media?
I'm sorry, we have to limit it. Otherwise, we could be here all day if the public, if I started doing that, Skip. And you can present your comments in writing to us. Okay? Okay.
You should have received them.
Yes. Thanks, Skip. We have some people online that would like to address us? Thank you. Lucy, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. Lucy, can you unmute your mic and give your comments? We heard you for a second, Lucy. Try again.
Okay.
There you go.
I'm sorry, I do not have a comment. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Are there any others?
I see none others.
Okay, then we will conclude our public comment period and we'll move to board member and county executive reports. Board members, do you have any reports? Okay, I have one. Suzanne, your light's on. Yes?
I do. I wanted to mention the Gathering Inns fundraiser last Friday evening, in which most, all of us attended, except the one who couldn't make it because of the weather and another commitment. But it was a great event. The, the, actually, it was, no, everybody.
No, we were all there.
Okay, we all were there. Excuse me.
I was trying to remember who was.
My memory is very, very short. So I wanted to mention that the fundraiser for the Gathering Inn on Friday evening, it was a really, really great event for any of you that have never been before. And it's a very good cause because they're raising money in support of their homeless shelter in Roseville. And I think they were, they raised over a hundred thousand dollars.
I heard three hundred and fifty thousand dollars between all the sponsors. Yeah.
Wow, that's wonderful. And so the other thing I did want to mention to everybody is that a couple of weeks ago, Supervisor Gore and Supervisor Holmes and I attended a meet and greet with the Placer County Youth Commission. And you would all be amazed at these young people. They're all high school students and they are all taking on these leadership roles. And I have to give kudos especially to Supervisor Holmes because he actually is the creator of this program. But you all need to meet, meet all of them. They are wonderful. They're amazing. And it's a great program. Jim, thank you for your contribution to that.
Thanks.
And there's one other thing I did want to remember to mention. I do know personally two friends, and that's not out of a great pool of friends. But they both developed blood clots for some reason in their legs and in their lungs. And for no other reason, they're perfectly healthy people, but they did take the vaccinations. They took the Pfizer and Moderna, not the Johnson and Johnson and, and the boosters and such. And of course, the doctors can't explain. They have absolutely no idea what caused them. But there are multiple blood clots in their legs and in their lungs. And so now they're going to have to be on blood thinners probably for the rest of their lives. Because if they don't, if they throw that blood clot into their heart, that they're going to be instantly dead as well. So I will never promote any COVID vaccinations, any boosters. I recommend you all don't take any, but it's entirely up to you.
Thanks Suzanne. Bonnie?
Your reminder about the Gathering Inn event, I appreciate that. Just a reminder to our board that we're continuing with the homelessness task force that the county is having with our, all of our cities, talking about next steps for plans for how we address homelessness. We're making a lot of progress and hopefully by the, well, we're still having small groups meet to move the work forward. But I really feel like we're having some good conversations with our cities, the city managers, our law enforcement probation and more to come. But I really do appreciate the work that we're doing together to try to figure out different strategies to address the homeless issue.
Thank you. And I had a quick report on, I serve on the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency Board, Governing Board. And as you know, we were also recruiting for an executive director. We made an appointment last week. We appointed Julie Reagan to that position. So many of you've worked with Julie, know Julie. She's been Director of External Affairs for the organization. I think she's worked there fifteen or seventeen years. So congratulations to Julie and we're in good hands moving forward with that. County Jane, do you have a county exec's report this morning? Okay, then we'll move on. It's not quite nine-thirty, so I need to go to a department item. We'll go to department item eight on the agenda, page one sixty-seven on our, in our packet. This is the Bradley Property Placer Legacy Program Grant of Conservation Easement deed to Placer Conservation Authority. Good morning, Jen.
Good morning. I'm Jennifer Bias here with the Planning Services Division. And we also have Greg McKenzie with us, the Executive Director of the Placer Conservation Authority. We're here to just briefly talk a little bit about the first example of the Placer Legacy Program and the PCCP effectively working together. In twenty eighteen, the Placer Legacy Program acquired the four-hundred-acre Bradley property as a jumpstart for the future PCCP when adopted. The property is located about a mile east of Highway sixty-five near Sheraton. It contains excellent vernal pool habitat as well as grassland. We acquired it with the intentions that, once ready, we would move forward and the property would be fully enrolled in the PCCP program. And fully enrolled means a conservation easement has to be recorded, which is what we're asking your board to do today. Execute a conservation agreement for the property. With the conservation easement execution, the property will be fully enrolled into the program. This is also a PCCP-approved conservation easement that the state and federal agencies have all agreed to. After we enroll the property and record the easement, Greg's group has two years to complete a management plan. The management plan will contain details about the property management with the PCA, the Placer Conservation Authority, having responsibility for the majority of the O and M under the terms of the conservation easement. So with that, I'm here to again request your authorization to execute the conservation easement as well as direct staff to complete the conservation, the management plan. And Greg and I are here both to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Greg, did you want to make any comments?
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ladies and gentlemen, Greg McKenzie, PCP Administrator and Executive Director of the Placer Conservation Authority. Just wanted to take a minute to kind of reflect back on the efficiencies that were designed. You know, Placer Legacy is the general plan policy regarding open space and agricultural preservation. The PCP is an implementing program under that Placer Legacy umbrella. So by bringing forward the four-hundred-acre Bradley property, purchase of Placer Legacy acquisition, recording a conservation easement on that property makes those two, between the legacy program and the PCP is implementing program really work as design, both effectively and efficiently, especially from a cost perspective. And so we anticipate this relationship between program implementation to continue into the future. As you may have heard just last week, we completed the purchase of the five-hundred-and-sixty-acre Red Wing South property that was a six-point-five-million-dollar acquisition funded by a federal Section Six grant and a one-point-three-million-dollar grant from the Wildlife Conservation Board. Placer Legacy kicked in a little bit less than a half million dollars. So the Placer Conservation Authority owns that property. And we expect to be working with the Placer Legacy Program now to have the Legacy County Program hold the conservation easement for that property. So I think we'll continue to see these over the course of time, be it the county or the Placer Conservation Authority own and/or hold conservation easements. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate that. Are there any questions? Robert?
I don't have a question, but a comment.
Yes.
I'd be remiss if I didn't express my thanks and appreciation, Greg, and all of his staff and Jen and other folks on the county side that this, the progress we're making so quickly is far beyond my greatest expectations. And it takes tremendous amount of work and knowledge, skill to get these things done. So we're in a great place and just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Robert. Any other comments, board members? Okay, then we'll go to the public. Are there any public comments on this item? I'm not seeing any in the room.
Not on Zoom.
Not on Zoom. Then I'll bring it back to the board. I just, I would just comment that looking at the map of the vernal pools and the wetlands is pretty amazing. The network through weaving throughout this property. I really appreciated seeing that and how, what great work we're doing to conserve these lands and with this easement as well as the acquisition. So this item requires two individual motions. And I would look to Supervisor Wygant if he would like to make these motions.
Proven authorized, the board chair, I moved with proven authorized board chair to execute Placer Conservation Program easement deeds on the three-hundred-and-ninety-nine-point-seven Braddock property, acre Braddock property located in the reserve acquisition for the Placer Conservation Authorities at the
Thank you Supervisor Holmes. And all those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Then I'll move to authorize the community development agency director or the state development executive cooperation in cooperation with the PCA and facilities management and subject to risk management, County Council of Concurrents and management plan for the property, the terms of which will include PCA's responsibility and cost coverage for all property management, maintenance, monitoring, monitor, monitor, monitoring and reporting and other necessary services in lieu of transfer funds for the grant of conservation easement deed.
Thank you Supervisor Swigant and Holmes, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, congratulations, congratulations to all of our residents to look at this great work in conserving Placer County. Hey, now we get to go back to our nine thirty timed item and this is a Placer County Transportation Planning Agency and the Sacramento Area Council of Governments presentation on from both agencies and welcome, we appreciate you being here and we're pretty close to on.
Thank you Madam Chair and good morning members of the board, Mike Costa with the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency or PCTPA for short. I'm also joined by my colleague Corey Peterson as well as James Corliss from STACOG. Um, and we're all going to be giving different parts of this three-part presentation. Presentation will kind of start with a short-term uh, planning uh, effort that we're doing in the county and then move to a longer-term broader uh, planning effort that both Placer County Transportation Planning Agency is doing as well as the Sacramento Area Council of Governments and their efforts. So with that, um, just a little bit about what PCTPA is, we are the Regional Transportation Planning Agency for Placer County excluding the Tahoe Basin. We are represented actually by all the jurisdictions in Placer County, including the board. Um, we have Supervisor Jones and Supervisor Holmes on our board that represent all of the multimodal transportation uh, plans and programs here in Placer County that go into our efforts at PCTPA. As the Regional Transportation Planning Agency for Placer County, we are responsible for administering many different federal, state and local funding programs that go into our transportation projects. One of the big important programs is our Transportation Development Act responsibilities, which is a state program that identifies two major funding sources that our jurisdictions use both for um, transit primarily, but also for local streets and roads purposes. Those two funding sources which are here on the screen, uh, the state transit assistance funds as well as the local transportation funds are generated both at the local and state levels through those different sources that you see on the screen. And then we administer them and distribute them to our regions based on population and also um, based on the revenues anticipated for other transit systems. While state transit assistance funds are used solely for transit purposes like capital purchases or uh, transit operations, local transportation funds can actually be utilized for other purposes such as streets and roads maintenance. However, before they're used for those other purposes, there has to be an annual process called the Unmet Transit Needs Assessment, which we're doing right now. Um, to identify if there are any unmet transit needs before those funds go over to other purposes outside of transit. The unmet transit needs uh, process, uh, we collect unmet transit needs uh, during a certain period of the year, which I'll go into in a minute. But then those unmet transit needs are evaluated based on definitions that our board adopts. These definitions which you can see on the screen uh, basically say that an unmet transit need is something for a service that doesn't exist in the county already. And then reasonable to meet, which is a second factor that we have to look at to determine if something is truly an unmet transit need. It has to be essentially feasible based on all of the criteria that you see in that reasonable to meet category. So we look at again, all the comments we received during a certain period of this unmet transit needs assessment that we do every year. And then we look at whether or not those unmet transit needs, if they are in fact unmet transit needs, if they're reasonable to meet. As I mentioned, this is a yearly process, we usually begin this unmet transit needs assessment in the September, October timeframe, right now, we last kicked off our survey for any potential unmet transit needs in October, that survey is live through November eighteenth and then after that, we'll be evaluating all the comments that we received during this period. Um, that survey, by the way, is, is available via that link that you see on the screen for any member of the public or stakeholder to access. And then after um, the survey closes November eighteenth, we evaluate all the comments based on those definitions that identified on the previous slide. And those comments are evaluated in partnership with our transit operators as well as our members on our Social Service Transportation Advisory Council that consists of other social service transportation providers and stakeholders that weigh in on this process and help us evaluate those comments. We then present those findings to our board typically around the February timeframe. So how can you become involved, as I mentioned, it's important that the members of the public take that survey if they believe they have any potential unmet transit need. The surveys are available both in Spanish and Tagalog as well as English, of course. And then they are welcome to contact me with my information on that screen as well as send me an email or, or give me a call or submit their comments to our offices directly. With that, that concludes my presentation about the unmet transit needs process, now we'll go on to a broader planning process that Corey's going to present regarding our regional transportation plan.
I might tie up a question.
Oh sure.
Sheriff, I mean, I just wanted to make sure that uh, in the memory of our friend Lee Bastian, that uh, there's a look at the Sheridan, the transportation unmet needs to Sheridan, I just have to do that for, for our late friend Lee Bastian.
Absolutely, thank you Supervisor Holmes. Any other questions, sorry, before we move to the next part? Thank you.
Good morning Supervisors, Corey Peterson, a Senior Transportation Planner with PCTPA and it's great to be here with you all, Happy Election Day, hope everybody got out and voted this morning. If you haven't, there's still time. Until eight o'clock, so make sure to get there.
You better believe we all did.
So uh, as Mike said, I wanted to just take a few minutes to talk to you about one of our, kind of our broader, long-range planning efforts, it's the Regional Transportation Plan. So this is a document that PCTPA is required to update every five years. And so really this is our opportunity to bring together all of our stakeholders, all the cities, the town and the county to talk about transportation, set our our goals and objectives and to come up with our list of projects that we want to uh, accomplish over the next twenty-five years. Our last RTP was updated in twenty nineteen, we'll be extending the horizon year of this plan out to twenty fifty. And so we've been working with all the agencies to put together a fiscally constrained project list, projecting out revenues to see um, how we want to shape our transportation system up to twenty fifty. So why is the RTP important? Uh, the best way I can describe it is the RTP is really the first step into uh, getting projects done. Um, you know, by the time, you know, you're driving down the freeway and there's construction happening, there's probably already been many, many years of engineering and planning work that's been into that project. And one of the first steps for a project to actually happen is to be in the RTP. So I wanted to highlight a few projects that have been, one project has been completed since the last RTP update. Of course, the first phase of the eighty-sixty-five interchange. And then a few projects we're working on right now in the unincorporated county, working on the highway forty-nine sub rock gap project right down the road here. Placer Parkway Phase One to help bring a new connection between sixty-five and ninety-nine, of course widening Riego Baseline Road with uh, bringing the safer connection out to Sutter County from West Roseville. So in order to update the RTP, we, like I said, we've been working with all the jurisdictions to put together their lists of projects and we kind of start with the project list from the last RTP in twenty nineteen. Update all the, all the costs and any, update any priorities and add in projects that may have come up since the last RTP update. And then of course, any projects that, you know, extending out the plan ten years that might be added in, in the twenty forty to twenty fifty timeframe. Uh, we are using this opportunity to update our goals and objectives for the RTP. There's a lot of um, you know, we're going to be doing a lot of community outreach to kind of get the pulse in the community to see what their priorities are and what we should be investing in as well as addressing any new state legislation or requirements that we want to make sure to incorporate into the RTP, which I'll get into now. Um, one of the things that we'll be considering, of course, is the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act or IIJA that was passed at the federal level last year. That'll be bringing in hopefully some more money to our county as well as to California. Um, CAPTIE or Climate Action Plan for Transportation Infrastructure is, was a state plan that, that completed last year that kind of gives us the framework to uh, think about our projects in a way that, you know, addresses uh, climate action goals and greenhouse gas reduction goals. Um, a lot of the state funding programs are going to be using, CAPTIE is kind of a, a guiding kind of as a guide to help assess projects through that lens, so we want to make sure we're addressing that in our RTP. Um, of course SP seven forty-three and VMT Analysis, which uh, went into effect a couple of years ago, that requires projects to be assessed on the VMT metric when um, when looking at projects through SEQA, meeting greenhouse gas reduction targets, which we will be working with uh, STACOG on as well, making sure that our project list as well as the project list for the six county region helps to meet our greenhouse gas reduction goals in the broader STACOG uh, Metropolitan Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategy or MTPSCS. We love our acronyms in, in government. Um, and then of course incorporating equity, environmental justice into the RTP. And looking at how we can uh, come up with performance metrics to help evaluate the plan and making sure that we're meeting the goals of, that we've established for the RTP. So the RTP is a kind of a two-year-long process, so we started earlier this year in working with all the agencies to get project lists submitted and submitted to STACOG. We'll be uh, working with STACOG to develop a preferred project list, it should come out sometime in early, mid twenty twenty-three. Finalizing the project lists and all the modeling efforts as well, kind of um, evaluating the projects to see how they would perform under greenhouse gas emission goals late twenty twenty-three. And then we're hoping to have the plan adopted by the end of twenty twenty-four. Uh, one of the things that we're doing right now actually is doing a pretty robust public first round of community engagement, so part of that is going to all the cities in the town and to the county supervisors to present and talk about the RTP and get people involved, we're going to be going to pop-up events throughout the county in late November, early December. Uh, trying to get to every single city and get out and talk to the community and encourage them to get involved. One of the ways you can do that is to take our online survey. We're trying to understand our community's priorities and that can be done at uh, PCTPA dot net slash RTP twenty fifty. Uh, so before I introduce James from uh, STACOG, I just wanted to kind of do a quick overview of kind of our process and how it relates to that of STACOG and and really there is a lot of similarities between our regional transportation plan and their MTPSCS. Um, both of them are long-range plans, they both include policy statements, lists of projects that have to meet you know, fist, that have to be fiscally constrained and meet greenhouse gas reduction requirements. Um, but the difference between us and you know, and STACOG is they also include the whole six county region, they do the land use modeling and look at development patterns as well as complying with the SV three seventy-five and the Federal Clean Air Act. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to James Corliss, the Executive Director with STACOG.
Well, thank you Corey and good morning Supervisors, uh, pleasure to be here. Um, the third part of the three-part tag team presentation, so I hope uh, I hope you're, I hope you're paying attention, there will be a test later. Um, so, so um, Mike and Corey did a great job setting up, um, obviously to start sort of the unmet transit needs, which is important across all the six counties. The county level RTP for PC, Placer County, Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. And then Corey was just referencing how this fits into the larger six county plan and um, so I just gotta, I want to talk a little bit about what the larger six county plan looks like. And I want to start by saying and reassuring that your PCTPA plan here in Placer County fits into ours, the plan fits into our plan, the outreach and engagement fits into our outreach and engagement. Um, and I think it's not just this effort, but other efforts um, that we've had some great partnerships on in the last, in the last few years. So just a, a quick reminder, uh, we're delighted to have Supervisor Gores, our, your board representative to STACOG and Supervisor Jones is the alternate to STACOG. We are the council of governments that cover six counties and twenty-two cities. We are probably the largest regional agency in the United States that have every single local government at the table twice a month. Um, every local government has a seat from Placer County to Sacramento County to Colfax and Ileton and Live Oak. Uh, and that's important because when issues come into play that are tough, that require discussion, deliberation and debate, every jurisdiction is represented around the STACOG table. So um, the long-range plan for the six counties, I said, will, which will work and the, the, the Placer County PCTA plan will feed into. We have dubbed blueprint because twenty years ago, we were actually, this region was embarking on a voluntary bottom-up effort to think about how we were growing. Uh, development patterns, jobs, housing and transportation and how those things were getting faced because the projections into the future did not look good. Twenty years ago, our future projections looked like we were going to spend a lot of money on transportation to make things worse. Worse air quality, worse pollution, worse traffic, right, and so the region got together. Nobody told us to, we did it voluntarily and developed a blueprint plan, which was a plan for smart phased growth, quality growth across the six counties and we're naming this plan update blueprint because of that twenty-year look back. But also because we want to really try to engage the region next year in twenty twenty-three on a similar discussion around where we're heading and what our future looks like. So um, okay, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use, try to use this sort of analogy here and Corey did a nice job setting up and, and this is so similar for Placer County and PCTPA as it is for STACOG in the six counties. A regional transportation plan is not every project that you can imagine and think of into a plan, it is a very tightly fiscally constrained plan. Meaning, um, we have to make some tough choices. Um, and we begin this fiscally constrained plan actually with a, with a real look at land use and growth and development, as Corey said. That feeds in as the foundation, in many ways that blueprint commitment that the region made twenty years ago is still uh, through all your general plans feeds into our um, our, our forecasts, our population forecasts, our housing forecasts with a long-range plan, so what it is not is a stapling exercise, as you can see the icons on the left. What is a strategic plan that's fiscally constrained. And the analogy I like to use is, what if you had a house, okay? You had a family and your family was growing, you had more kids on the way and so you needed more space. So you want to do a renovation, right, you want to have a little bit more room for your growing family, however, uh, your roof needs fixing and your foundation needs to be repaired and you don't have enough money to do it all. Right, so that's essentially the place we find ourselves in as a region, which is we are a growing region, we're one of the fastest growing in California, we are now faster growing than a lot of the coastal metropolitan regions. But we don't have a blank checkbook, regardless of any kind of sales tax measures for transportation in Sacramento County, the ballot today, in Placer County on the ballot in two years. Uh, we have to be thoughtful and we have to understand that we don't have enough money to fund every project. So we've got to make some, some, some trade-offs and some decisions. Um, there's that addition, that extra bedroom coming for those uh, growing families, so we got to make those trade-offs. How do we get more space, but do it thoughtfully and not actually let our foundation uh, deteriorate, right? That's the, that's essentially the, the challenge we have in this long-range plan. And this is all a preview this morning of setting up a lot of outreach and engagement next year in calendar twenty-three right alongside PCTPA. We have a triple bottom line framework for our long-range plan focused on equity and economy and environment, um, the three E's as we call them, we're trying to maximize all of these things. Uh, which is, which is really important, obviously it starts with growth uh, and, and development, but transportation is the name of the game. Uh, while not all projects are in the plan, in order for your project to be eligible for some state and most federal funds, you have to be in both the PCTPA plan and the larger six county STACOG plan. I'm running through some of these because um, I, I'm mindful of time, uh, there, as I mentioned, we're going to do something similar to that, what we did twenty years ago in the blueprint and that is uh, we're going to create three distinct scenarios for growth and land use and development. Um, and we're doing that right now, working with all of your staffs at a local level and we're going to be looking at um, basically a scenario where uh, you know, our blueprint from twenty years ago and our long-range plan that was adopted in twenty nineteen for the region is really a balanced portfolio between um, sort of urban infill and downtown uh, uh, kind of infill growth, suburban revitalization of a lot of our existing urbanized footprint and phased greenfield growth, so we have kind of buckets of those three and the interactions between all of those three are critical. But what if one of those were more um, emphasized, the other, what if we didn't really get a lot of infill? Or our suburbs kind of didn't get a lot of economic revitalization and we went outward, right? So we'll be looking at that outward growth scenario, as you can see in scenario one, two is kind of balanced and three is more uh, really revitalizing and, and, and refilling on the existing urbanized footprint and a lot of that suburban revitalization. So next year, when we have those scenarios for you and those pathways, we're going to have a lot of data along with them, what does that mean for air? Next year, when we have those scenarios for you and those pathways, we're going to have a lot of data along with them. What does that mean for air quality, for your commute? What does that mean in terms of getting access to jobs and education and healthcare? And we'll be able to share that, not just with you all as elected officials, but with the public. And that's where with P C T P A, we really want to be able to get out around the region and engage your residents, engage the public in a regional conversation. About the future of the region, about growth and transportation and infrastructure. So we want your help. Is what I'm saying next year, along with P C T P A to to really meet people where they're at and do some creative outreach and engagement. You'll see a timeline here that's very similar to the P C T A, P C T P A plan in in terms of adoption. So I want to cover now just a few of our initiatives. So that's the plan. I just wanted to highlight and end on a few things that we've been working on in terms of initiatives to implement the plan. I mentioned equity upfront and triple bottom line. Our boards adopted a statement, a racial equity statement of change and commitment. We're doing a lot of work around equity, racial equity and social equity and community engagement. We have a community planning program across four of the counties. To really engage lower-income communities and disadvantaged communities in helping shape their transportation future. This is going to be a, a major theme of our plan update, but it is already a major. A criteria for state and federal transportation grants. So when you apply, when we apply for state and federal transportation grants, we're going to be asked, what are we doing for disadvantaged communities? How do we connect lower-income communities and communities of color to opportunity and jobs and education and healthcare? And we need to have good answers to those questions if we're going to be competitive. A program we're really proud of, and I want to really thank Supervisor Gore for her leadership as board chair. S A C O G in twenty twenty for this is our Green Means Go program. Really happy to have the county involved and included in this. I mentioned those three scenarios. And what if infill development, suburban revitalization, economic revitalization didn't happen? Well, we have a program to try to really accelerate that kind of economic revitalization. In in areas that you all as local governments have adopted called green zones. We got forty million dollars in the state of California in the last budget. And we're now awarding grants to basically upgrade water, sewer and infrastructure to allow for more housing. In these areas that are marked green here, we actually know people will drive less, so there'll be less pollution on the road, fewer miles traveled. It helps meet our greenhouse gas targets. It helps you all in terms of economic revitalization. And it helps provide housing and and housing opportunities. This is really, I think, one of the most creative programs frankly in the state. At actually meeting state goals on local terms, and it also really helps meet our, our, our affordable housing challenge here across the entire region. And you can see examples of, this is both, you know, the urban core of Sacramento, but it's right here in Placer County. It's in Roseville and Rockland and up in Yuba City and Marysville. So the entire region is really participating in this program. I'm going to skip a couple of slides, focus on this one because we're really excited about this. And again, another great partnership with P C T P A. And Supervisor Gore is actually on our mega-region working group. So. We think about the six counties and we think about the, the, the challenge, but the opportunity of planning across the larger six-county Sacramento region. Well, I probably don't have to tell you that we've now, especially in the last few years, increasingly grown together as a northern California mega-region. Really, the I eighty and U S fifty corridors, all the way over into Nevada are now the sort of the, the arteries, if you will, right? Back and forth, Bay Area residents moving up here, moving to Tahoe, moving to Nevada, right? And transportation back and forth and and I eighty gets congested. So this mega-region working group, we've identified twelve projects, high priority projects. Across the Bay Area with our sister agency, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the San Joaquin Council of Governments in S A C O G. And those include I eighty and the I eighty corridor. And and U S fifteen, the Yellow Causeway, but also the Capitol Corridor and the Third Track Investment between Sacramento and Roseville, which is not just eight miles of track, as I hope you know. But it actually is about connecting Placer County. To Sacramento region, to the East Bay, to the South Bay. It is about connecting the larger mega-region. These projects are up for state funding. There's more federal. Passenger rail funding than there's ever been in our lifetimes available now at the federal level. So when I join some of you next week back in Washington D C, when you go back to Washington D C, we need to make these projects known. To our congressional delegation, to the administration, members of Congress, because there's never been a better time really than to advocate for these. So from connecting the mega-region with highways and passenger rail. Another great project that P C T P A was a crucial partner in is our regional trails plan we also released this year. It took two years of work. The vision is to connect every single community in the entire six-county region with a network, an off-road network of paved biking and walking trails. So imagine getting from Tahoe all the way down into the foothills, across down to the Delta to Yolo County, up into Yuba and Sutter. This is a sort of a, an, a, a cartoon characterized version, if you will, of the trail network. The G I S map will show you, there's a lot more trails on here. That everybody have sort of nominated locally and put into this network, and it really does, it connects the region. And these, again, this plan, I think, will really set us up really nicely for state funding and federal funding. And finally, every year we run a youth leadership academy. We get high school students from across the six counties. We put them through a four-month basically program on regional planning, economic development, transportation, climate change. And social equity and racial equity, and these kids are fantastic. Ninth to twelfth graders, the applications just closed. I know we often get a lot of Placer County students in here. I'd. Put a pitch in already to have any of you who want to come talk to our high school students. They love hearing from you. They love understanding issues across the six counties. We get members of Congress. We take them to Sacramento International Airport and it really kind of opens their eyes, not just that these are regional issues that they are going to have to solve one day, perhaps when they sit in your seats. But this is about their future, right? This is about the future of the region and it's a great career path as well. So with that, really delighted to be here. Thanks for your time and attention and taking all three of us at once. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, James and Mike and Corey. Appreciate that. Are there questions, board members or comments? Bonnie?
No questions, but just a comment. Thank you all for the hard work. Transportation is not easy. There is never enough dollars for all the projects. But I really do appreciate the fact that P C T P A. Can work well with S A C O G and vice versa. And I just know. Very clearly that we as a region have to work together on a lot of these issues in order to make projects successful. So thank you for the way you are collaborating together. I appreciate it.
Robert?
Yeah, just that. Thanks for coming up. It was a great presentation, including all three of you and really some excellent framing for long-range planning and thinking, which I think is so critical in our line of work.
Suzanne? Thank you all. Very good. I do have some questions on your park plan. Because you said it's a regional trails plan. I'm just curious as to what's the method? What, what's the overall plan of the trails?
Well, let's see. I mean, so these are basically identified, I would say probably about a. About a third. We, we built about a third of this regional trail network. It's on the ground. Think of the American River Parkway or think of the Dry Creek Park or Dry Creek Greenway, right? So, but it's a patchwork quilt. So there's stop, start, stop, start, right? So the plan basically, like most plans, identifies rights of ways, utility corridors. Canals, abandoned railroads, right? So we've identified with those partners, it's not just actually all the cities and counties. It's the utility districts. It's the reclamation districts, right? Rights of way that could be converted into trails, both recreation and frankly utilitarian as well, that can literally connect. The entire region and all the cities and counties and all the unincorporated communities. So it's a plan to do it. But now comes the hard part, which is actually implementing it and really like working together to go get the funding and 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 figure out how we're going to get it done and accelerated.
Right. I'm just wondering if you're, if you're drilling down to something a little bit more specific, like connectivity to shopping and dining. Connectivity to schools.
What? I mean, I, I don't have the stats up. So the answer is yes. I mean, partly it is about where we have those corridors available, right? Because it's really hard, as you know, to to create one where there's no right of way. Here's the good news about our region. Hundred and fifty years ago, the region was basically moving stuff, right? People, goods, water, and then, you know, power and 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 utility lines, all of those corridors that crisscrossed our region. Are absolutely perfect to create this network of trails. So. My, and I'm happy to follow up with Supervisor Jones. My staff has great statistics in terms of how many more people, if we built this network, would actually have access to these trails. How many more? Shopping areas, schools, essential destinations, would we actually connect people to within about a thirty-minute or twenty-minute bike ride? So we can provide those statistics.
Sure. I'm, I'm wondering if you welcome laypeople to join your efforts?
Wouldn't work any other way.
Well, because, you know, I have the Granite Bay Municipal Advisory Council.
Sure.
And we have a subcommittee. Of trails. And they're very interested in the connectivity to shopping and dining as well as schools. We have a lot of people who want their kids. I'm sure you've heard from some of my, some of my subcommittee members. They're very, very interested. And so I'm wondering if it's possible I can connect them to you or in some way.
If you, if they want a presentation on this, we do it with P C T P A, right? We'd be happy to do it.
Okay, well, maybe you might be amiable to coming to one of my Mac meetings.
Sure.
We do online as well, so you can come in person.
I, I, I think this is a game changer. I mean, we think of trails, I think sometimes as kind of a nice-to-have and amenity. I was just at the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, listening to the site selectors, who are basically national and advising companies whether to locate here. And here's what they said. Obviously, labor force and talent is the number one thing. Number two is, is this, do I have communities where I can live, work and play without getting in my car all the time? What are the places I can go to in terms of the outdoors? What's my recreation? Like, not on the weekends now, but seven days a week, right? So, so these are, I, I want us as a region not to think of these as, oh, it's kind of nice to have, but maybe sometime in the future, it's a must-have. It's a must-have for all kinds of reasons.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks so much.
Thanks Supervisor Holmes.
Yeah, James, thank you so much for taking the time to come and count it up here. A lot of exciting. Issues going forward. We've got a lot of growth. Important for Placer County, as you know, is sixty-five widening, particularly the westbound and then the Placer Parkway. There's dollars out there, state, federal dollars, but I want to let people know that. Local government has to bring some money to the table. And so I just want to re-emphasize that hopefully in the next few years, we'll be able to go out. And ask the people of Placer County for their help in bringing these projects forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And then I'll, I'll conclude with a question and a comment as well. As we look at the Interstate eighty quarter and I five, but especially Interstate eighty, when I look at the growth of the Bay Area and Western Nevada and those connections. I assume through both processes, we're talking with the other metropolitan planning organizations. That impact our mega-region and considering that growth and the impacts on our residents through these areas. I'm assuming that, I guess I should put a question mark. Is that correct?
Is that correct? We are, and I, and I give P C T P A and their staff a lot of credit for actually working very closely with Reno and Washoe County. T R P A I know has a, I think you all just announced, but a, a new executive director being appointed. Chair Christensen, I, the answer is yes. I think from the S A C O G side, I think we have to do better though, right? And so Supervisor Gore knows. We've done really well actually up and down the, the valley because of the north-south commutes and some of the projects. But I think we need to, we, we need to do, have a closer working relationship with folks like T R P A and Washoe County and Reno. For sure. And that's also, and again, with P C T P A's leadership. I mentioned the third tractor, Roseville, but you know, we've got to study now.
I know, I'm, I'm looking at this going, see that? If we could just keep going that way.
Little dotted line.
For those of you can't see, it's the rail.
Well, little dotted line up for trucking in Reno, because that's the key corridor. We've also got a great opportunity. Which is a regional priority from Sacramento. We're going to get the ACE train coming into Midtown Sacramento in about eighteen months. It's going to go north, connect to the airport. And then they're looking to go to Marysville and Chico, and that corridor is another high priority corridor. So if you think about. You think about those two quarters, you know, the rail corridor across the top here, paralleling eighty, and then north-south to the Marysville-Chico market. Which then will go south down into the Central Valley and also connect all the way down into the Tri-Valley and the Silicon Valley. Though, those are game-changer projects.
Absolutely.
So, so, yes, we are, we are coordinating. I'm really excited about your new appointment at T R P A. And I think we can get an even closer working relationship there.
That's great. With all that development in Western Nevada, taking so many of our corporations and industry, and when we look at the I eighty freight traffic that has increased, doubled or tripled. It's impacting all those communities along I eighty and our truck fires. We've been having a lot of discussions on a variety of issues. If we could get more rail, it would be great. Especially on days like today, when I would like to get home and not have to chain up. So, great. And again, my comment is, thank you. Thanks for the close coordination here and, and I know you can keep going. And going out in your outreach to these other areas, but really appreciate that outreach to the adjacent. Areas for planning purposes, especially when we're looking at long-term plans. So, thank you. Okay, we'll open this up now to public comment. Are there any members of the public here in the room that would like to address this item?
Hi, Jennifer, Placer County. My, my question really is, I saw some charging station pictures appear. So is this? If this is going to be planning where these charging stations are going. I'm just curious if there's any studies being done. With the E M Fs that come off this charging stations, because I've been watching a lot of videos and seeing a lot of reports showing the E M Fs. Coming off charging stations and charging cars and being in them are quite high. And maybe to the point where they could actually be harmful for people, depending on how long you're actually charging your car. So I was just wondering if there's any studies on that that you're considering, where you would be placing them, maybe as a setbacks. They're not like in the middle of a shopping center where there's lots of children around or elderly where they can be compromised a little bit more. And. So that, that's kind of my question. I don't know if that falls into your guys' realm for what you guys are doing and planning. And, and second, because I, I think this is all really cool, like this is a really cool presentation. I love. All the things you guys are talking about, but like I know in Sacramento. There's a section of trails that. There's a big drug trade going through with the homeless people. And so as we're connecting all these trails coming through and stuff, which is perfect, because we all want to bike ride and be healthy and run and walk and, and be able to explore. Like everything beautiful in Sacramento or California in general. And Placer County, like, how are we at all like looking at how to prevent crime from coming through from other areas? When before they wouldn't be able to come through that way, as well as with human trafficking. Because I think these are things that will end up. Coming into light as these trails open and stuff, which is fantastic, but I, but are we planning for those kinds of things as well?
Great. Thanks for your questions. We'll get to those in a minute. We'll see if there's other public comment.
We have one.
Peter, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Yes, I'm just, a couple of comments. This is a very important time for the regional transportation plan and. You know, we've got emerging transportation issues in the. In the county and. I think. Supervisors need to be reminded that there's two major other things going on. Almost simultaneously that need to be addressed as part of this thing. And. It's very important that they be integrated. You know, one of them is a short, short-range transit plan. For the first time, it's, it's going to include all the operators. And there's a real attempt, as I understand it, and I hope. There becomes some integration because there's some. There's some issues where there's some inefficiencies because of. You know, the operators. Could only operate certain ways. The other one is the sales tax measure. And, and there's some real issues in the sales tax measure that I don't. It really hasn't been looked at very closely. There's some items in there that may or may may not, may or may not make sense at this time. The R T P could change that. And they really need to be looked at together. So I hope that you can consider, consider that as, as it goes on of. Paying close attention to both those activities and. The S R T P thing, particularly the county. You know, it operates its, the transit plan, Placer County Transit. But really, all it does is operate. It doesn't have any capabilities for, really for. You know, for the, for doing planning and, you know, marketing and, and it really hasn't changed. In essence, for fifteen, seventeen years since two thousand and five. So this short-range transit plan is a very important item. That's going to take place and I, I, I just hope the supervisors really take a strong interest in. In, in participating in that plan and, and, and then being able to integrate. that with the sales tax measure and the, uh, and the RTP. So, so that's my thing. That's my point. My major point really is, it's an important time because there's a lot of other activities going on at the same time. And, and it's, at the agency level, they need to be, make sure that they get integrated. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and Peter, do you mind stating your name for the record? See it, that's okay.
Uh, my name is Peter Eklund, and I'm a resident of Rockland.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate that. Are there other public commenters?
No other comments.
Okay, um, would you like to address any of the issues that were raised under public comment? On EMFs or crime related to trails?
Um, very briefly, in regards to the EMF conversation, what the regional transportation plan as well as Secog's MTPSES looks at is a high-level planning approach. We do work very closely with local jurisdictions to develop projects, but we do not actually plan the specifics of those projects. And so, um, in terms of looking at the health effects of those projects, that is done more on the local level when they are actually developed.
Okay.
Um, in regards to the trails plan, um, again, the, the higher level broader approach is what we're looking at and the connectivity issues. When it comes time to actually constructing this, this, the trails as well as safety measures or mitigation measures for developing those, that does happen a little more at the local level when the actual process comes to construct those, those facilities.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that clarification.
Yeah, and I, I would just say on the, as in the trails piece, um, actually, there's a, there's a great fantastic national organization called the Rails to Trails Conservancy. And if you go on their website, um, they've just got lots of great case studies, right? Because I think, uh, loo- looking at how other regions have actually, I mean, there, there's a, there's an effort underway to connect um, Ohio, Western Pennsylvania, West Virginia with all the abandoned old coal railroad corridors. And they're making that into one of the best tourist destinations ever. So these concerns come up, right, around crime, around, uh, homelessness and everything else. I would just, I would just, um, I, I'd want us locally and as a region to separate out our, and your efforts to figure out homelessness, right, and housing people as distinct from building a great trail network. And, you know, if, if there are encampments under bridges, which there are, we wouldn't stop building bridges for that purpose, right? We would say, how do we tackle those root causes of homelessness? So it's not that there isn't, I mean, absolutely eyes wide open, get the statistics, understand what happens when you have trail networks. And like many things, the more people we have, more eyes on those trails, the more usage they get, the more they're connected to those essential destinations, the safer they'll be.
Absolutely. Well, thank you again, uh, unless there's any other remarks from the board members, we're finished with public comment on this item. We really appreciate your efforts being here today and, uh, the outstanding work you're doing. We look forward to the outreach and input that you're going to get and bring coming back to us. Thanks again. Hey, uh, we're past our nine fifty timed items, so we'll go to that now. And that's Health and Human Services, Placer County Mental Health Alcohol Drug Advisory Board Annual Report. This is found on page five of our packet. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning, Chair Gustafson, and members of the board. Um, Amy Ellis, with the Director of the Adult System of Care. Today I have privilege of being here with Lisa Cataldo. She's our Chair of our Mental Health Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board to, um, and she's going to present to you to, uh, their efforts last year in working as a board. So there, they, um, this board has twelve seats, nine of them are filled. They really help work with me and my staff to get educated on, uh, mental health and substance use issues of our county, what services we have, and provide a really great input. Um, they, they do some advocacy. They also do some, you know, like reading of contracts and all various other to become really well, um, well-understanding of our issues and be able to provide family member, consumer level and, um, and population um, information back to us in our planning efforts. So, um, they had, this board has a requirement of fifty percent of board members to be consumer or family members. And one of the seat is for our board member, Supervisor Holmes, who's been a longtime member on the board as well. We're grateful for his service. And I'm going to turn the time over now to Lisa to present their activities for last year.
Good morning, Chair Gustafon and members of the board and members of the community. And my name is Lisa Cataldo, and I am the Chair of the Mental Health Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, and I'm also the Executive Assistant to the Superintendent for Eureka Union School District in Granite Bay. Just to give you an idea of my other hat that I wear. And, um, I am a parent of a son that's living with schizophrenia. And so that's where my passion comes from, to be on the mental health board. And with that, I would like to start by thanking the community members who volunteer their time to serve the community on this board. We serve by hearing staff reports reviewing contracts and data, performing site visits of services, attending community behavioral health forums and events, and listening to the needs of the community. Community engagement, recruitment, and visibility is a constant focus of this board. As a result of these efforts, goals and recommendations are created in the areas of mental health, substance use services, and children's services. Some of the highlights of the past year include the board advocated for providing input and saw the realization of a new crisis center at the Kirby Hills location, which we are very excited about. And my daughter is a physician assistant at Sutter Roseville. And when it first opened, she works in the ER. And, um, she was at Sacramento Sutter for twelve years and just came up in April of this year to Roseville. And it's the day after it opened, she's like, what's the number to that crisis center? I have someone I can recommend to go there. And it, it was just really neat to have that connection. And I thank you for that. And I'm also pleased to be invited to participate in the ongoing evaluation meetings along with the hospital and law enforcement personnel to ensure the needs of consumers and family members are considered. The board continues to advocate for crisis services that will better integrate with nine eight eight. The board also celebrated new infrastructure coming to Placer, including additional psychiatric hospital beds, eighty-two units of permanent supportive housing, and two new locations of behavioral health crisis services through the state infrastructure grants. The board was included in the planning and provided input to fill these critical gaps in services for residents with behavioral health needs. We heard presentations related to the fentanyl crisis and advocated for increased prevention and treatment services for, um, the substance use disorder. Our children's committee was pleased with the expansion and continued improvement and support of the Family Mobile Team Service and the School County Collaborative Implementation of Wellness Centers in South Placer. And I also want to give a shout out to Amy Ellis. Because she has done an outstanding job, and this is my seventh year on the board. And I am grateful to work with her and have her ongoing support. And she is phenomenal. And what she's done for this county and mental health as, along with Supervisor Holmes, we are forever grateful. In conclusion, we appreciate the opportunity to discuss the work of the Mental Health Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, and know that your board's support is critical to the success of these vital programs.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And Supervisor Holmes.
First of all, Lisa, let me thank you for your leadership on the board. Uh, you really bring a lot of, uh, knowledge and, uh, understanding, uh, to this, the, the board. Uh, I know you're busy with your regular job and your, your son. But, uh, I, I just greatly appreciate, I appreciate the outreach, uh, being at the Lotus, uh, Center, the ribbon cutting, and also Recovery Happens, uh, the Mental Health Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board is there, uh, uh, celebrating people that are, uh, in recovery from thirty days to thirty years. So, uh, it's very important for that outreach. And, uh, we've got a lot of more work to do as well, as well. But I think, you know, this board gets a better understanding of how the system works and has input from their personal lives, uh, to inform the Health and Human Services Department what, what really needs to be done. So I, I just can't thank you enough for your leadership and, uh, the work that the board does. So congratulations.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you. Are there other board member comments or questions? Okay, then we'll go to the public and see if there's any public comment on this item. Not seen any in the room and none on Zoom. Well, thanks to you and to all the volunteers, um, who make this work and really help our staff understand the needs that are out there in the community and Supervisor Holmes as well. So thank you.
Thank you. One more thing to add is we do have three vacancies. One, we're hoping to fill soon, but two for sure. So if you do have any members in your, um, in your district, so we would be happy to interview them and welcome to the board.
Good to know. Thank you. Great. And we'll move then to our item, uh, number three on our agenda. And this is the introduction of Placer County's new Veteran Services Officer.
Good morning, Chair Gustafson and members of the board. Greg Geisler, I am Deputy Director, Health and Human Services for the Human Services Division. And I'm here this morning to introduce you to Placer County's new Veteran Service Officer, Matthew Galvin. The Veteran Services Office came under the Human Services, um, Division about four years ago. And the Veteran Service Office serves veterans in our community, helping them, uh, to obtain benefits, both federal and state that they may be entitled to. And these include, um, benefits for disabilities that may have occurred during their time in the service or were exacerbated by their time in the service, as well as, uh, college fee waivers for their, uh, for their, uh, children and, uh, and, and uh, others in their family. So, um, we had had our, our Veteran Services Officer Derek Olivera recently leave us. He was, uh, 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 an excellent VSO popular and did a great job for us. Uh, big shoes to fill, but did obviously, um, offer a new opportunity for both us and someone in the veterans community. And that someone is Matthew Galvin. So, he, uh, just started with us about a week, about two weeks ago. And good timing, because it's right before the, uh, Veterans Day holiday this Friday. So, uh, Matthew was born and raised in California, and he's a former All-American and NCAA Division One athlete, student athlete. He competed at the world's first Military Olympic Games held in Rome, Italy. Uh, he holds a master's degree in public administration from San Diego State and spent twenty-five years serving our country in the United States Navy, from which he recently retired. He received his military commission from President George W. Bush. He's a Placer County resident and is married with two children. So, uh, I would like to step aside, introduce Matthew and let him share a few words. So, Matthew.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Supervisors, CEO, my pleasure to be here on, on behalf of Dr. Rob Oldham. And of course, Mr. Greg Geisler. My name is Matthew A. Galvin. And, um, it, it really is a superb pleasure for me to be here as I attempt to represent the very best of my abilities, the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, US Coast Guard, and of course, the US Space Force. If I may give just brief statistics for the board, ma'am?
Yes.
Very brief. Just to give you an idea. Within the fifty-six county Veteran Services Offices statewide, Placer has the fourteenth largest veteran population. Placer's veteran population is approaching twenty-seven thousand veterans. Last fiscal year, Placer VSO submitted a little over eighteen hundred new claims to the Veterans Administration. Those claims resulted in almost six point one million dollars in monies for our veterans, just a little over thirty-three hundred dollars on average per veteran. Again, as we look towards th- this coming week, weekend, and we celebrate veterans, it's very customary in the United States military. If I may, I'd, I'd like to read you Old Glory. I am the flag of the United States of America. My name is Old Glory. I fly atop the world's tallest buildings. I stand watch in America's halls of justice. I stand guard majestically over great institutions of learning. I stand guard with the greatest military power in the world. Look up and see me. I stand for peace, honor, truth, and justice. I stand for freedom. I am confident. I am arrogant. I am proud. When I am flown with my fellow banners, my head is a little higher. My colors a little truer. I bow to no one. I am recognized all over the world. I am worshipped. I am loved, and I am feared. I have fought in every battle of every war for more than two hundred years. Gettysburg, Shiloh, Appomattox, San Juan Hill, the trenches of France, the Argonne Forest, Anzio, Rome, the beaches of Normandy, Guam, Okinawa, Japan, Korea, Vietnam, and the Persian Gulf, and a score of other places long forgotten by all but those who were there with me. I was there. I led my soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines. I followed them and watched over them. They loved me. I was on a small hill in Iwo Jima. I was dirty, battle-worn and tired. But my marines and sailors cheered me, and I was proud. I have been soiled, burned, torn, and trampled on the streets of countries that I have helped set free. It does not hurt. For I have been soiled, burned, torn, and trampled in the streets of my own country. And when it is by those I have served and battled with, it hurts. But I shall overcome, for I am strong. I have slipped the bonds of earth, and from my vantage point on the moon, I stand watch over the uncharted new frontiers of space. I have been silent witness to all of America's finest hours. But my finest hour comes when I am torn into strips to be used as bandages for my wounded comrades on the field of battle. When I fly at half-mast to honor my soldiers, my airmen, my sailors, my marines, and when I lie in the trembling arms of a grieving, grieving mother at the graveside of her fallen son or daughter, I am proud. My name is Old Glory. Long may I wave, dear God, long may I wave. So as we celebrate Veterans Day on the eleventh, it's important to note that since the American Civil War, there's been about one point two million fatalities in the United States of America. Thank you so much for your time. It's truly my pleasure to be here. And sir, it's a great honor to have met Captain Holmes. So from Commander Galvin, I salute your brother, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much and welcome. We are so pleased to have you join our team and to serve our veterans so well. Are there any other comments, board members?
Thank you and welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're trying to figure out which sport you played, so just, uh,
Basketball and volleyball.
Okay, kind of thought so, but you know, thought I'd ask. Oh, I'm sorry. Was there any public comment on this item? None online and none here. So thank you again. Welcome. Okay, we'll move to our ten-ten timed item. This is County Executive Fiscal Year twenty-two, twenty-three, first quarter fiscal update. This is found on page nine of our board's packet. Welcome, Daniel.
Good morning, Chair Gustafson and members of the board. I'm Daniel Chatney with the County Executive Office. I'm here to walk through the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, first quarter fiscal update. At the end of the update, we are requesting your board, um, approve a fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget amendment for county operating and proprietary budgets. At the end of the update, we are requesting your board approve a fiscal year 2223 Budget Amendment for County Operating and Proprietary Budgets. Approve a fiscal year 2223 Budget Amendment for County Special Districts. Approve the purchase of capital assets and introduce an ordinance approving an amended fiscal year 2223 uncodified allocation of positions to departments and waive oral reading. Sales tax represents about 7% of the discretionary revenue in the general fund. Maintaining focus on potential economic changes, the current year budget was set slightly below last year's actuals. The variance between quarter one in this fiscal year versus the prior year is due to an error in the posting of some sales tax revenues totaling 1.7 million, which is currently being corrected. The true actuals for quarter one is 2.8 million in line with last fiscal year. As you will see in the projections on the next few slides, the first quarter actuals usually have significant accounting adjustments and accruals that affect the actuals. Projections will be further dialed in as the year progresses. Public Safety Sales Tax is collected and pooled statewide and then distributed proportionately, proportionately to local agencies based on direct sales tax. Indications are that this may dip for Placer County mainly due to a decrease in Placer County's pro-rata share allocation. But current year revenues are so far in line with last year. Current year budget for General Fund Transit Occupancy Tax Revenue was set in quarter three of the prior year, well before actual revenues were known. So budget and projections are currently lower than the prior year actuals. But the budget amount, though, has been reset to recognize the growth in this revenue stream year over year. Current year for Tahoe area transit occupancy tax revenue, the same is true. The current year budget was set in the prior year before actual revenues were known. So those were a little slightly lower at $15 million compared to $16.7 million of actuals in the last fiscal year. The budget amount, though, was reset again, was reset this fiscal year to recognize the year-over-year growth in that category as well. Perhaps the most significant change so far this fiscal year is the General Fund Property Tax Revenue, which showed about a 9% increase over prior year actuals. So coming in at about $233.5 million for this fiscal year. So going into our first quarter comparisons, the increased revenue projection for the General Fund is based on the 9% increase in property taxes. We have researched the impact of labor negotiations on the General Fund and other budgets, but at this time are not projecting any significant increase. We will continue to analyze these costs and additional staffing throughout the year and make adjustments in future quarters as needed. The first quarter actuals for Health and Human Services Fund are similar to first quarter of the prior year. The fiscal year 2223 budget and projections show a current deficit of almost $9 million. This is mainly due to the rollover of expenditure encumbrances, which increase the expenses, but do not roll over with offsetting revenue. This will self-correct as the year, as the expenses when made will be billed to grantors and contracts, and the revenues will increase accordingly. And the Public Safety Fund, the fiscal, in fiscal year 2122, we ended with increased receipts from Public Safety Sales Tax and a surplus of almost $19 million of revenue over expenditures. As a reminder, much of this has already been allocated from the Public Safety Fund in support of two SB projects, the Medium Security Vocational Center at the South, South Placer Justice Center, as well as the SB 863 Mental Health Facility Project at the same location. For the library, a surplus of revenue was budgeted in the current year. This was intentional to offset any increased cost for expansion of library services or impacts from labor negotiations. But current year revenue and expenses through the first quarter are on par with the prior year. At this early point in the year, we have updated library projections for the increase in direct property tax revenue that is expected, but have not increased salary and benefit expenses for the three additional staff and increased staff hours that are supporting enhanced library service hours. In our Fire Control Fund, the main difference in between fiscal quarter one of fiscal year 2122 and 2223 is just the timing of the transfer of general fund support from the General Fund to the Fire Control Fund. And in fiscal year 2223, direct property tax revenue is projected higher, relevant to the General Fund Property Tax Growth. The 2223 Capital Fund, we are planning facilities will present its mid-year capital improvement plan update in early 2023, but ongoing support from General Fund Capital Reserves are supporting some of the projects like the Criminal Justice Facility Projects mentioned earlier, the Health and Human Services Center, the PCGC Phase One Infrastructure Project, and Atherton Tenant Improvements. Here is a table showing the current allocation of American Rescue Plan Act monies. As a reminder, the Affordable Housing Homelessness Bucket was reduced from $8 million to $500,000 and then shifted to help claim the revenue loss amount of $10 million. This move provides more flexible use for projects that are preferred, but might not be appropriate given federal requirements. Here is a current look or up-to-date view of our ARPA spending. The county was allocated $77.3 million. We have received 100% of that. Reported expenses to date are only $2.2 million. But as a reminder, we have until December of 2024 to encumber all of the funds and until December 2026 to expend all the funds. And those are a list of some of the major projects that are either partially complete or ongoing. I'd like to send a, I'm sorry, in March 2023, you could expect us to come back with the mid-year fiscal update and more refined projections for both revenues and expenditures. On November, November 28th, we're planning a special budget workshop for the fiscal year 2324 budget. I do want to send a quick thank you to the budget team for their work on this update. Some aren't here today. One due to illness, one is on jury duty. But to Chad Fenstermacher, Daniel Vick, our newest teammate Amber Easton, and Barbara McAllister, who led the effort to build this update in Gravity Software to make it more efficient and reader-friendly. So I hope you like the new format. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate it very much. Are there questions, board members?
Yes, Supervisor Gore.
No questions, but thank you very much, Daniel. Appreciate the update, but also appreciate you updating us on the money that has been set aside for homelessness and affordable housing. It's not in this list, but we clearly have done that. It's just moved into a different pot, and I, I appreciate that because it is an issue that we have to continue working on, and we're going to need some funds to do that. Great, thank you. My, my comment or question would be on the significant increase in transient occupancy tax revenues. I think some members are concerned that that means more visitors, but actually, as I understand it, it is more higher rates for the hotel accommodations themselves, and not necessarily more people, but people spending more. Is that inaccurate from, this is from last year and then looking at our projections?
Chair Gustafson, yes, that is, that is accurate. We, Revenue Services Division, along with our Tahoe team, did look at that, that spike in TOT revenue from the Tahoe region and concluded that it was mostly related to increased rental charges for the.
Charges, right. The prices have gone up a lot, but that, that's important for people to understand because I think they think it's more visitation and are concerned about that, that we're pushing that. In fact, it's just been supply and demand and higher rates. So, great. Any other comments or questions? Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Not seeing any here in the room. Nobody's jumping up. So, thank you very much. Good news. It looks solid moving forward. Hopefully, we'll have a good winter season. Does that certainly the tourism impacts help? But the property tax looks great. Thank you. So may I go ahead and do each one, or can I just make a motion for all the items? Individual. All right. So I move to approve the fiscal year 202223 Consolidated Budget Amendment for various county operating and proprietary budgets. Okay, motion Gore, and I heard a second Holmes on this one, and then I'll go back to Wygant on the next. And this is a roll call vote. Gore?
I.
Wygant.
Yep.
Holmes.
All right.
Jones. Gustafson.
I.
And then I'll approve the fiscal year 202223 Consolidated, Consolidated Budget Amendment for Lightning Districts, Lightning and Landscape Districts, Benefit Assessment Districts, County Service Area Zones, Permanent Road Divisions, and Sura Maintenance Districts governed by the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, so I have Gore and Wygant. Individ, uh, roll call, I'm sorry. Gore.
I.
Wygant. Holmes.
I.
Jones. Gustafson.
I.
And I'll move to approve the purchase of capital assets and delegate authority to purchasing agent to execute related purchase orders, including those in excess of $100,000.
I'll say.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes. Roll call. Gore.
I.
Wygant. Holmes.
I.
Jones. Gustafson.
I.
I also need to introduce an ordinance approving an amended fiscal year 202223 uncodified allocation of positions to departments and waive oral reading.
Do I have a second? Say, thank you, Supervisor Bones. We'll get everybody in on this. Roll call. Gore.
I.
Wygant. Holmes.
I.
Jones. Gustafson.
I.
Thank you, board.
Thanks, Daniel.
Thank you. Hey, we'll move to our 10:30 timed item. This is the proposed renewal of the Olympic Valley Alpine Meadows Micro Transit District. And I think Stephanie Holloway is going to start us off, and then Lindsay Romack.
So, good morning, Chair Gustafson, members of the board. Stephanie Holloway, your Tahoe Deputy CEO. I'm here this morning really just to introduce this item. Lindsay's going to do the heavy lift on the presentation, but wanted to take the opportunity to just really recognize the significance of the microtransit district that has been in existence in Olympic Valley over the last couple of years. You heard from CACOG and from PCTPA and a number of different transportation initiatives and transportation focus. In the East County, we're obviously focused on alternative modes as well, moving people around in, in ways that don't require them to be in their vehicles. And so, just wanted to kind of highlight the importance of what this microtransit district has done for our region as well. You know, started in Olympic Valley, meeting some, some identified needs there for mobility, but then also launched us forward on the Resort Triangle Transportation Plan effort to really focus on how we can do microtransit potentially in the basin as well. And then your board approved a two-year pilot for microtransit, and Tart Connect was born. So, you know, just, we're going to talk to you about the renewal of the Olympic Valley effort here today, but just wanted to highlight really the importance of microtransit to Eastern Placer. And then recognize Joy Doyle, their Executive Director of Mountaineer Transit Company, as well as the Board of Directors. They've really done a great job in implementation of the district over the last couple of years. And so just wanted to start out by recognizing them. So, I'm going to hand this over to Lindsay and welcome Lindsay, here in Tahoe.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Hello, Board of Supervisors. My name is Lindsay Romack. I'm an analyst with the County Executive Office, and I'm coming to you from very snowy Tahoe this morning, which we are excited to see, and appreciate the opportunity today. So, today is an opportunity for you to conduct, conduct a public meeting to allow members of the public to provide comments on the proposed renewal of the Olympic Valley Alpine Meadows Micro Transit District, and also to introduce and waive an oral reading of an uncodified ordinance to renew the microtransit district. So, to go back a little bit, as you probably remember, on October 11th, your board approved a resolution of intent for the renewal of this proposed Olympic Valley Alpine Meadows Micro Transit District. This action was taken after more than 77% of assessed businesses in the proposed renewal district submitted petitions in support of the renewal. And as a reminder again for your board, I know you're familiar with it, but for any public listening as well, the current district that is in place has been in place since it was approved by your board in 2018. And the Assessment District, as Stephanie spoke to, funds the Mountaineer Micro Transit Service in Olympic Valley and Alpine Meadows. And since its first season, it has carried more than 200,000 riders. So, the proposed renewal would have the same boundaries as the current district. A few changes in this renewal, that would include the name change, Olympic Valley Alpine Meadows Micro Transit District. Also, it is proposing to continue to assess all lodging properties and all single-day lift tickets. And one addition in the new management district plan, it would also include PAC products, which are multi-day lift tickets, though it would not include season passes. And then the final change would be the assessment would change. The current district has an assessment of 1% and the new proposed assessment would go to 1.5%. So, after your board passed the resolution of intent on October 11th, notices were sent to all affected business and property owners informing them of today's public meeting and the district renewal process. So today is an opportunity to hear from any members of the public who have joined us. And then also, as I mentioned, for you to introduce and waive the oral reading of the uncodified ordinance to renew the district. So, checked in with the clerk of the board, and we had not received any written protests as of yesterday afternoon. I do know your board has received some written support letters from Palisades Tahoe, Resort at Squaw Creek, Plumjack Inn, and Granite Peak Management. And so as a reminder, today, you will hear these public comments, and after today's hearing, your board would hold the final hearing on the renewal of the district at your December 6th board meeting. If your board decides to move forward to renew the district, you would adopt a resolution of formation. And also at that meeting, the second reading, reading of the ordinance would take place, though the ordinance itself would not take effect until February 1st, 2023, which is when the proposed renewed district would begin. And then there is one more step to this slightly lengthy process as well. If your, if your board does move forward with approving the resolution of formation, then you would also be asked to modify the current district because that district is currently set to expire, not until September 23rd. So we would be back to you later in December to modify the current term to terminate it. So that way, the new renewed district would begin. So the action requested of you today is to conduct this public meeting and receive public comments. And then, as I mentioned, to introduce and waive an oral reading of the uncodified ordinance to renew the Olympic Valley Alpine Meadows Micro Transit District. And then finally, to make a finding that the requested actions are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act Review pursuant to SEQA Guidelines 15378B. And so with that, happy to answer any questions before you receive public comment.
Thank you, Lindsay, and thank you, Stephanie. So we will look to any questions of the board members first. Okay, then we'll open our public meeting for public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to address this item? Not seeing any on Zoom. So we'll close the public meeting on this and enter, and then we have two motions. One is to introduce, as Lindsay said, and waive the oral reading, and then make a finding on the requested actions. Do I have a motion for those two items? Gore and Wygant? And then all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great job. We look forward to the great partnership we have on these items. Thank you. So that concludes our morning timed items list. We do have timed items for this afternoon, but we will now go to Department Item 8B, Local Adoption of the 2022 California Building Standards Code. Gabe is here as well as others, so. Got a whole team for the building codes. Great.
Well, good morning, Chair Gustafson, Tim Wagner, and members of the board, Tim Wagner with Building Services. I'm a Deputy Director with Community Development and proud to be here today to introduce an ordinance and waive the oral reading to repeal and reenact Chapter 15, Article 1504 with the Placer County Code, adopting the 2022 California Building Standards Code as amended. And today I have Gabe Armstrong, a manager with Building Services in Sedra, here to give a presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair and distinguished members of the board. As Tim had said, my name's Gabe Armstrong. I'm your Building Services Manager, assigned out of the Tahoe office. I'm here today to present a short presentation recommending the adoption of the, of the 2022 California Building Codes and Fire Codes with local amendments. Building and Fire Codes are state mandated and are updated every three years. The local amendments are amendments to the Building and Fire Codes based on the county's unique topography, geology. The local amendments are amendments to the building and fire codes based on the county's unique topography, geology, and climate. For example, most of Placer County is in a high fire severity zone. For this reason, over the years, the county has adopted amendments to the codes to further protect life and property. This code review started July 1st, 2022. And the state mandated codes with the county amendments approved by the board will go into effect on January 1st, 2023. Significant mandated changes with every triennial code cycle adoption, there are always changes to the code. Some are minor and some are more significant. This cycle, three significant changes have been identified. Aging in place, energy code updates, and wildland urban interface, which is basically ignition resistant construction. First off, aging in place. Some of the new requirements to the building codes are to improve the standard of living as we get older. By making some easy changes to the way we build homes, residents will have the ability to live in their homes longer with enhanced comfort that is not afforded in many of the homes built under the current code. Energy code. Oh, sorry. Let me, let me speak to the, some of the changes. They're going to widen door openings to the bedrooms and to the bathrooms so that wheelchair access or walkers are easier for you. They're lowering some of the switch heights for turning on lights and also outlets will not be any lower than 15 inches to the ground. So just general things backing behind the sheet rock instead of having to remodel your bathroom, just add a grab bar. The backing will be in place. So some pretty easy changes, inexpensive, but will make a huge difference. The energy code updates. As California continues to move away from the use of fossil fuels such as natural gas and propane, the energy code compliance portion of the building code is moving closer to 100% energy neutral through solar and battery backup. With the adoption of the 2022 building codes, homes will not be required to be 100% electric yet. But they shall be ready to accept all electric appliances such as a heat pump for, for water heater, electric cooktop, electric clothes dryers. That's common. Wildland Urban Interface. This is better known as WUI. These are the requirements for the higher fire severity zones to protect our residential and commercial buildings. The only significant change to this code, that accessory buildings within 50 feet of a property line will have to be built to a higher standard than they are today. Basically sheds, shops, garages, and similar structures will have to be ignition resistant construction like their homes. Recommended local amendments. We are bringing forward our traditional amendments that have already been approved and passed adoptions. We're updating the subdivision early permitting requirements. And we're, we are recommending snow shedding requirements. The county's traditional adoption amendments are recommended to continue to be approved with this ordinance, such as the ag exempt program, which allows farmers to build unoccupied agricultural buildings with limited permit. And then as well as we want to continue to to approve, have you approved the accepted engineering practices needed for the extreme snow and wind loads in areas above 5,000 feet in Placer County? And then finally, we are recommending the continuation of the two safety feature swimming pool barrier requirements that the county has. And if you weren't aware, the state has actually moved towards, or has adopted two safety measures as well, kind of copying the county.
If I can, if you don't mind, Chair Gustafson, the photos that we're going to show here are actual photos, Placer County.
I thought it was my house.
So these are true replications of what we experienced with the depth of snow.
High country. And so it's a little what you're going to hear us today, talk about the snow shedding provisions that we're going to introduce here.
But also why we've enacted for many years, special provisions around snow loading and wind loading, right? We have special, we're in a special region, so we don't get the privilege like many other communities do of opening the book and looking at a chart and being able to determine what our, what our snow loads are 20, 40, 100 pounds. We have snow loads, believe it or not, in the Royal Gorge or Serene Lakes area that get up at around 380 pounds a square foot. So the 380 pounds per square foot. So that's a significant load on these structures. That's why we're just asking to continue those proven techniques that we have to protect our homes in those high countries today.
And with that, the subdivision early start permits, I will turn this over to Matt Bartholomew. He's from Sidra's Engineering and Surveying Division, and he will discuss these provisions with you.
Thanks, Gabe. Matt Bartholomew, Engineering and Surveying. Generally, ordinance prohibits the granting of single-family dwelling permits within a new subdivision prior to your board accepting the underlying backbone improvements as complete. However, ordinance does have a provision to allow early non-occupancy building permits prior to your board acceptance. At that point in time, typically all the utilities are in, the roads are complete. The fire district has looked at it and said it's safe for their access. And we allow building permits to get underway. One substantive change here is, as currently written, the early permit ordinance allows up to 20% of the number of lots to be granted early building permits within a larger subdivision, several of which we have going now. We are increasing that number from 20 to 50% with suitable argument from the developer and with David's concurrence. And separately, there's some, some minor language improvements to clarify some of the conditions we put on granting those permits, things like survey information to make sure we know where the lots are, where the corners are, things of that nature. That's pretty much it. Have you take any questions?
May I ask?
Thank you.
Yes. So this would really just, the purpose is to make it a little bit easier for those lots being developed to move forward a little bit more quickly, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Yes. Some of the larger subdivisions now have, have a need or an interest in more permits than we've historically granted. So, and there's really not a risk to the county.
That's right. There's no reason to not allow them to move forward because you're going to continue to do all the inspections, make sure everything's inappropriate. It just allows them to move a little bit more quickly with all the building going on.
Yes.
Okay.
In particular, if you don't mind, today with supply chain impingements, what we find particularly is in PG&E and smud areas that they're having complications receiving transformers and other switch gears. And so what's happened is that's precluding them from continuing on with development of homes that are, will not be occupied, but for future occupancy. But our current ordinance, because there's no, the infrastructure is not complete, we can't allow that percentage to continue. So this is to kind of recognize constraints that are in today's construction environment and to provide flexibility to the developers within control that we understand that we're just not going to have a bunch of homes out there that will never be occupied because there's not infrastructure.
Okay, so on to the next recommendation. We are, we are asking to make changes to improve our current snow shedding requirements to save, safeguard against potential life safety issues. Snow shedding off of roofs can cause many problems, not only for the entry into buildings for the occupants and first responders, but more importantly, exiting of the building. You know, being trapped in a building can be very dangerous for the occupants. So, and I'm also sure that code compliance could attest to that the neighboring property owners get very upset when neighbors show, snow shedding becomes a problem for their property. For, for an example, yearly, we have significant damage to buildings due to snow shedding issues. And last year alone, we had a, a snow shed push the exterior wall of the kitchen into the middle of, of the building, causing significant structural water damage, electrical hazards. And for this reason, we are recommending snow shedding provisions designed during the project review stage to protect walkways, exits. Sometimes decks will get overloaded with so much snow, people don't clean them off and they just collapse and and then also for adjoining parcels. And then with that, it's fire code update. So I'm going to pass it over to Fire Marshal Ryan Westner, and he's going to speak to the fire code update.
Thank you, Gabe. Thank you Chair Gustafson and members of the board. My name's Ryan Westner, Placer County Fire Marshal. I recommend adding a definition of building area to the 2022 California Fire Code. Having a clear definition of square footage brings clarity and consistency in implementing fire code as seen on page 198. My first recommended change would be for the sprinkler ordinance 903.2, removing floor for the word building. My second would be for the fire alarms. That's 907.2, and again, removing floor for the word building. Each one of those codes has a requirement square footage of the sprinklers is 3,500 square feet and the alarms is 1,500 square feet. It's already in the code. And with that, I would like to note for the record that we discovered a clerical error in the proposed ordinance on page 240 of your agenda packet that needs to be corrected. Under ordinance 1504, 590 Automatic Sprinkler Systems, the sentence stating section 903.2, where required, add the following to section 903.2 of the CFC should be deleted. The action requested is that the board introduce an ordinance and waive oral reading as modified to repeal and react, reenact Chapter 15, Article 1504 of the Placer County Code and adopting the 2022 California Building Standards Code as amended.
Chair, for clarity, the board was provided and the public was provided with a corrected page 240 showing how the ordinance should be.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, thank you for your guidance.
Right.
All right. Well, that's our presentation. This team is here to answer any questions that you may have for us.
Great. Thank you so much, Gabe. Thank you, everybody who participated. And I'll look to board members for questions. Supervisor Gore. Thank you. Appreciate the updates. I actually don't have any questions about this, but it reminded me of something. And since y'all are sitting here, the ag exempt program for under 10 acres, terrific. Twice, I think, maybe in 2019, we had items come before our board that had to do with ag buildings that didn't require a permit. And on the county's website, it said ag buildings don't require a permit. And a lot of people didn't click through to find out they had to fill out a form to get that waiver of the permit or had to apply somehow. So I am just asking that we make sure that our website now is clear. And it's probably been changed, but I thought I'd take this moment to make sure that website and the Sidra website is clear that it doesn't just allow people to think that there are no requirements when they have an ag building.
Noted. We'll make sure.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Good, good, good memory there on a couple painful meetings. I had a quick question. I know this isn't, I don't think codes adopted an amendment on page 220. We talk about outdoor lights at Serene Lakes in particular needing to have that exterior light photocell operated. And I hear this quite a bit throughout the foothill communities that people are concerned with light, light staying on all night, lights. Why was Serene Lakes called out some time ago? I'm sure there was a group and I just was interested in why Serene Lakes and not other areas.
I'll, I'll take that. Chair Gustafson, I don't really have the background for that.
Okay.
I do see it looks like around a 1985 that wasn't infected. I'm, I'm glad to look into that for you and can provide.
Well, I think there's other areas that may desire, be desirous of that is, I mean, that's a simple fix, but we have a lot of complaints. We hear it a lot about short-term rentals, but it also applies as we've looked into it to many other homes that leave their lights on all night. And so as we're building new homes, that's a relatively simple one. All of these are relatively simple at the beginning of a new construction project, but.
Correct. Yeah, we'll work with planning as well. My understanding is, and we have had prior conversations with planning about building in their zoning ordinance and provisions around light pollution and dark sky.
Yeah, dark sky ordinances. I know a lot of people are interested in that. And then Suzanne, you had a question or a comment?
Yes, yes, I do. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate that. First of all, I wanted to ask questions on the state mandated changes. The aging in place, particularly the portion that says all electrical outlet switches and controls shall be located between 15 inches off the floor and 48 inches, correct?
Yes.
Is that 15 inches? Is that lower than the standard is for electrical outlets right currently?
I believe it's, it's higher. Yes.
Oh, okay.
Correct. They don't have to reach as far.
Correct.
Okay. I was just concerned. I know we're building it in for the aging community, but I'm also thinking about people who might be moving into a new home, newly constructed home that have children. And kids and children, you know, that ready availability of outlets. We all know that's a disaster.
Right. What they're, what this, what this Supervisor Jones, what the state's intending to do is provide a range and accessibility. This doesn't go as far to say this is an accessible feature. It's trying to help, you know, as we get older in our mobility. But really an accessibility, we see ranges, reach ranges of your ability to reach sideways or forwards. And then in this condition, trying to reach down to plug something in.
Right.
So it's trying to create a range that they know if you're in a wheelchair or a mobile unit or something to that effect, that you can still reach those type of units. We hear you about the child protective devices and recommend folks would install those other, you know, aftermarket protections for their children as well.
Well, they're slightly higher though than current.
They are. There's really not a range today. So outlets can be in a variety of locations. So this really helps in that required location that they're in that 15, at least, at least 15 inches.
Okay, great. And then on the energy code changes. So my question is that these are required on new construction, right? The energy code changes where it looks basically like they're trying to get rid of gas in homes, gas cooking ranges. Want to go all electric?
Yeah, correct. Supervisor Jones again. Yeah, that's the states, you know, they've got a goal by 2025 to be, you know, net zero energy in new homes. And this is part of the initiative. They changed that goal. It used to be net zero electric. And about five years or so ago, they changed that to include the exchange away from propane and natural gas as being like an energy consumption. Today we're seeing the prices and that's sure a market that's going to probably drive that if we're getting zero energy in our home and our solar is covering that. And so that's the intention is for new homes is it's not going to require, as Gabe mentioned, that you have to install electric appliances today. But you have to have adaptability. So you have to have the ability to exchange that later. A future owner says, I would rather not have propane or natural gas that the outlet's already pre-wired for them. They can just plug in their new electric range or cooktop or dryer or hot water heater or or HVA system. So they're really requiring any of those systems in our homes today. Their propane and natural gas have that redundancy.
Okay, so you have to build in the capability to switch over.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, part of the, you know, if you were going to do a pro forma, that's probably not cost. There's probably not cost benefit in that to a builder to put both systems in. So why we haven't, we're not seeing plans come across our, our desks these days with the new code standards, although we will be shortly here. Our expectations are that builders will likely choose one mode. They'll choose the electric mode.
Right.
They're already building in the solar. They already have an energy plan. And so our senses, they probably won't pipe the house with natural gas or propane systems.
Right. Because I see this as very expensive to builders.
It can add that cost, right? Today there's impingements on with interest rates and other costs of constructions and lead times. Last thing they want to do is have redundant systems to add cost to their bill.
Are they going to have to build in storage facilities for the solar?
So that's part of this thing is it does have to have the, the energy storage battery systems available. So just like previous codes. So that's part of this thing is it does have to have the, the energy storage battery systems available. So just like previous codes required electric for electric vehicle ready. So in your new home you bought, you could go in and then you can, it's all ready for you to plug in your new device or put the right, right breaker in. This is doing the same thing. It's requiring that it's, your home is ready for that battery storage system. It's pre-wired and everything's available for you to hook that in. If you so choose not to do it at the time of purchase, but later you could add it without pulling the walls back apart with.
But will they have to do it when someone buys a new home at that point?
So they won't, they'll have to make it battery ready. They won't have to actually put the batteries in. Now that's the choice of the owner and the builder. Part of their energy plan could be, we don't want to put you know, a 10K solar system in, we're going to put a 5K solar system in with storage because we're collecting and holding our storage. So there's a lot of methods around.
Right. My understanding is the storage is really expensive.
It can be. Those power walls can be about $10,000 or more a unit. Many homes can take between three and four of those units. You can be talking 40 to $50,000 for, for storage systems. But if you look over time, just like with solar, there's added value to those and particularly with the way the grid is these days, if you're adding more service, meaning electric vehicles at your home, you're probably going to have to look at some alternatives.
Right. And this is going to go into effect this January 2023?
In January 2023. And as Gabe described, the, the state mandates this upon us where we don't have any option. If we took no action, your board took no action today, that this would still go into place in January 2023. So really what our goal today is to bring forward kind of our traditional amendments, things like snow and wind, any other things we recognize. You know, we changed our swimming pool barrier standards long time ago to two, two barrier requirements. So we're in a great place. And then like today, we recommended some different changes with early start permits and those things. So in order for those to be in effect, we have to adopt this by January.
Right. Of course, the additional concern is the state taking our, our approval authority. Right. So my question on these energy code changes and everything, they're, they're based on new construction. But at some point in time, with those of us who own an older home, if we do some major renovations, will we then be required by law to comply with these?
It's, it's not in the code at this time, but they could always update the code in the next cycle and, and make that required.
All right, three years.
Get that renovations going this year, right?
One of the, one of the things too is that there's a possibility that you'll go to buy a gas appliance and it won't be available. So that's another reason. They, for this code.
Okay, then, um, let me ask again, I, I know you just got through talking about the start and the early permits. So can you clarify again for me, the purpose in that? Is, is there one purpose or are there multiple purposes?
For the early start permit?
Yes.
Yeah, it's what we've been experiencing over the last couple of years is developers have been challenged with lead time on infrastructure items. And Matt, we can probably speak a little more to this, but really, you know, with transformers and switch gear, particularly on the electric side, and Matt, maybe they're finding supplies with their sewer pipe and other particular items as well. So what we're trying to do is allow the build, build, you know, schedules, their ability for them to, you know, get their concrete on time. They really have to schedule things out so far in advance, whether it's labor or supplies and materials. And that lead time really pins them in. And so what happens is if we can't allow the developer to continue to roll as their infrastructure is going in, there's huge cost implications to them. And not only that, but we're not building the community at a pace in which we need to be putting housing in and then we'll stall. And then we're going to, and stagnate until such time that infrastructure go in. And so what we're doing is at a good pace and monitoring. And that's why we're trying to provide the CEDR director, this discretion is what is leading up to this with kind of the causal agents of it? How as we can continue to protect the community as it, or as it's designed, but to let the builders move forward based upon what we're understanding the circumstances are in a good way that we know is healthy for the, for the environment.
So will this be required for the early permitting or will there be other? Will we eventually kind of just sort of let those slide and use other excuses for early permitting?
Well, so what this will do is, for example, in, I won't use any names, but in one of our subdivision, our production housing builders now, they are pushing on the 20%. They've got 20, they, they can only build up to 20% of their lots at an early start stage, right? So if they had a thousand, they could only build 200 of those, right? So what we want to do is be very careful about when they're pushing up on that 200 is because of the infrastructure, they have to stop. Well, they really want to go to 210 or 220. Well, today they wouldn't be able to do that. And so we're allowing that discretion to the CEDR director just to allow them to go to those initial additional percentages based upon what the constraints are, so we can have good sustainable building.
Okay. And then my final question was on the snowshedding. I, I didn't see any specificity to this. What are we just developing concepts for that or?
Oh, yeah. Great question. Yeah, we actually, we modeled after Truckee. We know Truckee's had a standard in place forever. The last couple of years, we've been experiencing more of this. I have been scratching around myself. One of our supervising inspectors actually worked in Truckee and was the building official up in Grass Valley for a while. So he, he kind of knew where to go grab for this information. So we, we did, we took a look at that. It made a lot of great sense for us in our community as well and thought for regional consistently, why not in Truckee? And, and in our high country have the same standard. So we just modeled after them. Basically it's a design stage is for the builders to, and designers to try to understand orientation of their roof and how that snow might slide. So on some of these others, for example, if you have a gable end and the snow is going to slip this direction, it won't go off the flat part, it'll slide down the roof. Well, if another home is on the side here, well, that's going to slip off and hit it as Gabe's example was. So it might encourage the designer to turn their home in this direction. So the gable end is actually
facing the.
Facing and in the same, right? So we don't have that condition. So it would slide forward onto their property. And again, that's what we're going to be looking for. What are they doing to protect their own decks?
Right.
Right? They build these big massive heavy timber decks, but then if they get five, 10 feet of snow, literally that slips, that goes down and crushes the deck. So many times some type of a roof cover, an eyebrow. We do have snow cleat requirements and things now too that keep the snow really at that eve line. But this is going that next step to make sure those exits, like you saw, were just completely blocked off. There's, if somebody was inside their emergency personnel, that would take them a long time to dig through that. Make sure they can get out, make sure they're not impacting a neighbor's structure, make sure they're not impacting their own structure, like a detached garage or shed that their design is going to.
So, so will you just have like this grab bag of ideas or will you come back to us specifically with ideas? I'd be interested in knowing some of those ideas.
So it's, it's specifically written in here for what the standard is.
Okay. Just in the package.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's, we actually created a new section.
Nice. And there are a lot of structural engineers. This is all they do is the structural calks, depending on the slope of the roof and where it is and how they're going to have to.
I'm more interested in some ideas how to avoid those. We have a little
Right.
tiny forest service cabin with a roof like that.
Yeah.
In the first year that we had a lot of snow at the 4,000 foot level, it took out the chimney.
Right.
So it's like, I'm open to ideas. And my final thing is to tell you very, very good, Tim, I really appreciate the thoroughness of your report. And to tell you that I found out that I'm friends with your Aunt Nancy.
Oh, are you? Nancy DeRose? Oh, wow. Very interesting.
Apparently my family went to school with some of her siblings.
I come from a family of teachers. Yes. So they've got a lot of folks in Sacramento.
We didn't come from a family of teachers, but, but my, my older brother, older sister son went to school some years.
Oh, nice.
It's your mom, maybe your.
Very well. Nice. Thanks for sharing.
Supervisor Holmes, did you want to?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment. First of all, thank you for this update and Supervisor Jones, thank you for your questions. I just want to let you know that I read this with interest. And I actually got my tape measure out and measured the, the outlets, light fixtures and the door frames. And I'm good. So bringing that to my attention.
Right. My only other comment is just as we look at the crisis in affordable housing, all, I, I understand the need for all these safety improvements. We learn more, we do better, but it costs more. And so when we look at the cost of housing to build a new home, all of these features add and add and add. And how we address that then comes back on us of what are you doing to create more affordable housing? And, you know, so I, I understand why we need to do this and a lot of people can afford these improvements, but we are out pricing a lot of folks. So I know you have a really tough job, all of you in regulating and having to tell people, no, you've got to redo this. Make sure they comply regulations. You're the front line on this and we really appreciate how hard it is to, to regulate folks. They're, they're trying to find ways to save money and get their project done. And you have to be the bad news sometimes. So.
Well, thank you for that. I really do appreciate that. And I, I have a great team, you know, they really do try to understand what the condition is and how we can get there. And, you know, we, it's very difficult for us to talk cost, right? Because we're about safety and those provisions and that's very dangerous slippery slope for us. But what we do like to do is hear from the developer and the builder about what those costs look like and what the alternatives can be and how we can get there. If one of their alternatives meet the code, then we're glad to get there regardless if it's cost savings for them. Great. So, so we do appreciate that. And, you know, again, with these state mandates, there's really no way for us to, to change many of these provisions, like the new energy requirements and so.
No, you're absolutely right. I just need to make that point because we hear that at the other side of how can, how can, you know, it costs a half a million dollars to build an affordable unit, right?
It does.
And it's hard.
Yeah.
Well, that, that was my final question. You triggered something when you said, will these be required on affordable housing?
Yes, it will. Yes.
So you can take off the affordable part.
Yeah, that's part of the, what's driving.
We call it achievable.
I mean, the fortunate thing, right? Moving the outlets has no cost, right? They just low put them in a different location. They have to do the redundancy. They can choose not to put the natural gas and propane in. So they, they would have had one or the other systems. Now they've just chosen the electric system. So they, there's different methods of them getting there without driving. They cost too much in, in some of the provisions that I'm seeing today. But overall, it's like you said, it's kind of a trickle effect over time. It's a little here and a little there, but over a period of time, that becomes a kind of a bigger mound of requirement. So appreciate that. We're really doing everything we can to facilitate development, but make sure the community is safe is our primary.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, we haven't taken public comment, so we will open this up for any public comment on this item. Are there any members of the public? No one appears to be jumping up in the room, so we'll look online. Okay. Thank you again. And we'll come back to our action today, which is to introduce an ordinance and waive oral reading to repeal and reenact chapter 15, article 15.04 of the Placer County Code adopting the 2022 California Building Standards Code as amended. Does that capture it?
Introduce the ordinance as amended.
As amended. Okay. Introduce the ordinance as amended. Do I have that motion? Second. Bor and Holmes, all those in favor? I? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Gabe. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
I know you're all and the whole team for doing the hard work.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to item nine on our agenda. This is found on page 245 of our board packet. It is the new Health and Human Services Center Information Technology Equipment Purchase Authorization.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. I'm Genevieve Vargas, Senior Architect with Capital Improvements. And I'm here today with the following request to authorize the purchasing manager to issue as needed, purchase orders in the amount not to exceed 500,000 in accordance with the procurement policy for standard new building information technology equipment as planned and budgeted in the new Health and Human Services Center building. A little bit of background, on May 11th, 2021, the board authorized the execution of the construction contract with Turner Construction Company for the new Health and Human Services Center building located at the Placer County Government Center. The facility broke ground in spring of 2022 and has projected a fall 2023 move-in with the final completion in early 24. As part of the new county facilities projects where IT equipment is required, it is planned for purchase and in coordination with the IT department and procurement. Based on the scale of this project, the IT equipment purchase exceeds our $100,000 purchasing authority and requires your board approval. This purchase is standard IT equipment that goes into every building and is housed in the MDF and the IDF rooms. The purchase will include network switches, the UPS, the wireless access points, switching cable, everything that's required to connect the county workstations to the network servers. Historically, this type of equipment takes two to three months. But because of our wonderful long lead times that we're dealing with right now and supply chain issues, we're estimating delivery approximately 12 months. So this is earlier than our normal purchase timeframe that we would come for this ask, but we're obtaining, asking for this now to keep our project on schedule. The environmental impact is on April in 2019, the final EIR for the PCGC master plan, which includes the HHS project was prepared in pursuant to CEQA guidelines and was certified by your board and the mitigation monitoring report, reporting program supported by and incorporated by reference in its entirety, the findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations was adopted by your board, including the related approvals. And the board today, the actions today by your board are consistent with that final EIR. The planned cost for the IT equipment in the amount not to exceed 500,000 is budgeted in fiscal year 22, 23 capital projects fund and under the project for the Health and Human Services Center within our technology portion of the project's budget. And the total HHS project cost remains estimated at 90 million 480,000 and this action does not have any general fund impact.
Thank you, Genevieve. Appreciate that. Are there any questions, board members? Not seeing any. Is there any public comment on this item? And I'm not seeing any in here. So then I'd accept a motion to, okay. Holmes and Jones, did I hear? Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to item 9B, 247 of our board packet. This is the draft remedial action plan for the former Lincoln gun ranges.
Good morning, Eric Finley, Real Estate Services Manager, Department of Facilities Management. And we'll see, my PowerPoint is up. We're here today to discuss and request your approval of a draft remedial action plan for the remediation of the former Placer County Gun Ranges in Lincoln and authorization for our Director of Facilities Management to submit the plan, excuse me, to the California Regional Water Quality Control Board. So the property that we have, and I'm going to pull out my pointer if it's okay. The county owns 46 acres off of Oak Tree Lane in Lincoln. And we acquired the property in 1968 from the federal government. Originally, this property was in unincorporated Placer County, but in 2018, it was incorporated into the Village One area plan and annexed into the city of Lincoln. So that's the area you see outlined there, the larger 18,000 or 1,800 acres. Fun fact is that the site was formerly the Lincoln Missile Site. So the federal government owned it and constructed a missile site, Titan 1A missile site on the property. It was operational from 1962 to 64, roughly there, a very short period, but a very critical time in our history. And when they were done, they decommissioned that site. They removed all the tanks and infrastructure from the property, anything was there. And they gave the property or sold the property to the county in 1968. In the 1990s, there was some environmental and studies done on an adjacent property and found some impact that later got tied to the missile site. So there is environmental impact associated with Lincoln Missile Site. And the federal government and the Army Corps of Engineers are responsible for the assessment and remediation of that impact due to the Lincoln Missile Site. And we're not here to discuss that today. I just want to be clear. There's environmental issues associated with our gun range, but there are separate independent environmental issues associated with Lincoln Missile Site. And so I want to be clear on that. So this is the property. We now have three parcels there and the missile site and the gun range are on the same property. So I'll point out the three silos associated with the missile site there. And there is underground infrastructure that remains on the property. Again, all the materials have been removed, but the concrete, the tunnels, the living chambers, all those areas are still there. But they're all subterranean and they are flooded. So you cannot go down into the missile sites because groundwater is somewhere around 10 or 15 feet below the ground surface. So they are flooded. We have actually two gun ranges. We have this diamond shape. This is a skeet range, skeet and trap range. And then the smaller diamond. And then the smaller diamond, this is the rifle and pistol range, uh, that were both operated by the county. Uh, use was discontinued, uh, around the late nineteen nineties, around nineteen ninety nine, somewhere in there. So they've been non-operational since. The primary constituent of concern at the two gun ranges is lead. Lead associated with the BBs from the skeet and from bullets from guns. So. That is our primary constituent of concern. Uh, additionally, at the skeet range, to a much lesser degree, there are poly-nuclear aromatic hydrocarbons. Which are basically associated with the clay pigeons, which are not clay, they're a resin. And so there is some contamination associated with that. Um, the contamination has been well investigated by the county over the years. Most recently by our consultant Provost and Pritchard that we acquired, uh, under contract in two thousand seventeen, a contract that your board approved. They've done some additional investigation and updated, uh, update of studies. And that resulted in a remedial, uh, feasibility stud- study report or. Uh, that was prepared in December of twenty twenty one and submitted to the regional board. In that study, they evaluated various remediation alternatives and. Most of the lead impacted soil is in the top foot from the ground surface, so it's fairly shallow. Um, but the alternatives that were presented range from cleanup to commercial levels. Which would be, um, about three hundred and twenty milligrams per kilogram of lead. Or to residential levels, which is eighty milligrams per kilogram of lead, parts per million. So it's a lower level if you want to have a residential cleanup goal. The other variable that came into this is whether material could be encapsulated on site in a waste containment unit that would require monitoring. A cap and a deed restriction. Um, or if it should be hauled off, uh, offsite to an appropriate landfills facility. So those were the variables that were considered in the feasibility study. The county, uh, I'm going to go ahead and just show you quick pictures. Of the, uh, rifle range. So this is the top photo there is the firing line. Uh, into the berm. So the gun range berm is still there. It still has the bullets in it. Um, and then the second photo on the left is the backside of the berm, which there is some lead, lead impact there because. Not everybody was a great shot, and so some of the bullets went over the berm. And then this is our skeet range. It's not a great photo, but it does show that on the left side is the clubhouse for the skeet range and the firing line as was there. And then it shot out, basically, uh, the skeet range went out over the three silo areas, over multiple acres. There's a spray field of BBs that went out, uh, in the direction of the three silos. So that just kind of gives you a general sense of, uh, where the skeet range is. So the state California Regional Water Quality Control Board is the lead regulatory agency that oversees this property. And, uh, or regulates this site. We own the property and we're responsible. So the feasibility study provided these alternatives. There's a cost range in these alternatives. So cleaning up to commercial goals and leaving it on site. Is the cheapest alternative, but maybe not the best alternative. Cleaning up to residential standards and hauling it offsite is the most current conservative in the sense that would provide the most flexibility. For future use of the property, it would increase the value of the property, and I think it would. Uh, what's appropriate term, Karen, maybe less, um. Less, uh, chance of litigation in the future of somebody that might be interested. It would protect the county against future litigation in the future. Uh, if we did a more conservative remediation standard, um, I think it would provide us protection, risk management. So we directed Provost and Pritchard to prepare a draft remedial action plan. That presented the alternative to clean up to residential standards and hauling the material offsite. And we are requesting your board's approval to submit that plan to the regional board. So what we will do, the plan is currently draft and the regional board is asked to be submitted as a draft. They would like to review it and then provide comment of which that we then finalize the plan. Once we finalize the plan, then we would work to refine the cost estimate to implement that plan. Cause it's right now, our estimates are preliminary estimate based on contractor cost and consultant oversight. But it's, we'd like to refine that and then we would prepare technical bid specs that could go out for a contractor. Um, to propose on that, and at the same time, we would be working on funding sources to see where our funds would be to implement this remediation plan. And with that, I will answer any questions, uh, that you might have.
Any questions, Board Members? I'm not seeing lights go on. Supervisor Gore.
I just have a question for Supervisor Wygant. Did you ever shoot at that location? No, really?
Okay, I was inquiring mine.
A lot of other places, though.
If I may, there was a brief story, the regulator that came out to the site from the regional board initially. Said this site looked very familiar, and when she was a teenager, she used to load clay pigeons into the skeet range, and so she actually. Was a volunteer or worked at the site and then became a regulator of the site.
Great. Um, well, I don't see any other questions from the board, any public comment on this item. Then we have an action requested to approve the draft remedial action plan. Thank you, Supervisors Wygant and Jones. All those in favor? I, any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. There's no end to the variety of issues we get to deal with on the Board of Supervisors, I'll just say. Yes. Yeah. Okay, we'll move to item nine C, fee increase for reproductions and education programs. And this is found on page two sixty nine. Brianna Ryan is here, uh, to present this item.
Okay, hello. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Brianne Ryan. I am your supervising curator for the Museums Division in Facilities Management Department. And today we are asking for a resolution to approve a schedule of fees for archival services and reproductions. And an increase in our educational program fees. Okay, um, with that, I would like to proceed with a brief presentation to highlight the work that we do in the Museums Division and illustrate our reasoning behind the request for this resolution. Um, since nineteen forty eight, all work we do, uh, is focused on our mission, which is to serve the public. And promote community involvement through heritage education programs. Preservation of historic artifacts, preservation of the county's rich historic, uh, and cultural legacy. And by adding to the understanding of Placer County, its people, places and events. Today, we do this in a variety of ways, including through our museums and exhibits. Digital projects, education programs, reference services and preservation efforts. To broaden our reach, we have begun a dedicated effort to regularly produce online content. This is a sample of some of those projects, which include, uh, artifact highlights. Walking and virtual tours that we produce and focus on communities throughout Placer County. Uh, we have a variety of history projects and an extensive online student resources catalog. Meanwhile, our in-person education programs include a third grade living history program, which we. Do at the Bernhard Museum and which now also includes a homeschool week to just reach out to more students in the community. And we also have expanded that and are now offering living history at the Fruitvale Schoolhouse Museum as well. We have a fourth, fifth grade gold rush program, which we are now also offering virtually. And have been able to reach schools as far away as Pennsylvania and Hawaii. Uh, meanwhile, we host a number of other popular events for the community all year long. Uh, in two thousand eight, by resolution, our living history fees were set at ten dollars per student. And since that time, uh, the cost of our lumber that we use in the living history program, both at Fruitvale and at the Bernhard Museum, has increased. An average of three percent annually from each of our vendors. Uh, the cost of foodstuffs has also increased an estimated average of, uh, thirty eight point eight eight percent, uh, since that time. And we're also offering a new, uh, living history experience in which the curator travels to campus. And presents, uh, a living history there, day there for students that are unable to travel to our museums in person. And for those days, there are supply packets that can be purchased, um, for the students to use, but it does not include the foodstuffs that we do. For the in-person, uh, on museum site living history program. To offset the rising cost of those foodstuffs and lumber, we are requesting an increase of, uh, from the ten dollars per student fee. That we currently charge to twelve dollars per student and from the seven dollars that we charge for supplies, uh, to become eight dollars per student. We would also like to recover the cost of mileage for travel to those on-campus presentations based on the standard IRS mileage rate. Regarding reference services, uh, our Archive and Research Center is open by appointment to public researchers, and we also serve. An increasing number of distance researchers. As the county's archival repository, researchers can access the records of multiple county departments that have been transferred to us. And we serve, uh, through the Archive and Research Center, uh, about five hundred research requests annually. Most services are free and would continue to be so. We encourage researchers to come to the archive. And to take photographs of the material free of charge. To better preserve our originals and to be more broadly accessible, we have also launched an online catalog. Uh, which we populate with our digitized records and which stores our high-resolution master scans. From two thousand twenty, when we launched this online, uh, search portal to present, we've served over thirty six hundred. Uh, researchers that have been able to access more than ninety six thousand records on this database. Preservica is the name of this data storage and access system that we use. It stores those high-resolution master scans and also gives us. Uh, that public-facing portal. Uh, it comes to us at a cost of fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety nine dollars per year. And, uh, to advance our preservation efforts, we are also continually rehousing the material as it comes into us. So that it can be stabilized and preserved for generations to come. Just since two thousand sixteen to present, we've seen a nineteen percent increase in our preservation supplies across the board. And up to twenty three point four two percent increase in sleeves for photo negatives, which we are regularly purchasing. So to offset, um, the data storage and access system, as well as the rising cost of preservation supplies. We would like to implement some fees, uh, for archival services. For photographs, depending on the file format, uh, from the requester, whether it is a JPG or a TIF file, we would like to charge between one to two dollars. And the file format determines the data storage that, or the data that is generated and therefore needs to be stored. For court case files, uh, that's actually what I'm illustrating in this slide here. That's a small sample of our probate files. Uh, and as you can see, they are bound, and so in order to digitize these, and they come with a lot of different material inside these files. Uh, we do not have them digitized currently, but we do so per individual request. And so to do so. Uh, it generally takes between two to three hours of dedicated time. Each document has to be photographed front to back in a readable research quality PDF generated. Uh, these are frequently, uh, two hundred-page PDF documents, and they can be more than a hundred megabytes that we're sending to the Requester. So to offset some of that staff time and the data needed to store these documents. Uh, we are requesting between thirty to fifty dollars, and that depends on the extent of the contents that are being requested by the, uh, individuals. Once again, they are welcome to come in and take photographs of the material free of charge themselves. This would be if we are providing it as a service. Uh, for maps and plans, um, to offset the preservation costs of digitizing and storing that data, depending on the size. We would request between ten to twenty five dollars per digitized item. For audiovisual material, it's similar in that it would be between twenty five to thirty dollars per digitized item, depending on the format. And therefore, the data that is generated and stored on our servers. Reproduction prints is something we would like to be able to offer. Currently, um, what we can do is a photocopy. Just based on the standard rate for photocopies, but we would like to be able to provide, um, nice display quality reproduction prints. Uh, depending on the size of the requested reproduction, it would be between twenty six to eighty four dollars. That offsets a little bit of the data storage, but, uh, largely is to provide for out-of-house printing services. For research conducted by staff, this is increasingly a request of distance researchers. And, uh, across the board, we always give an hour for free to everybody, uh, and generally that is enough time to gather the deed record. Or the obituary or, um, or pull material that they might need for an in-person research appointment. Um, however, frequently we are being asked for, uh, conducting additional research beyond that first hour, and we would like to be able to accommodate that. By, uh, offsetting it with, uh, charging the curator's annual salary. Or annual salary, sorry, not a, not annual. Um, finally, shipping is something that we've never charged for before. We've absorbed that cost. Uh, but especially if we're providing reproductions, we would like to be able to recover that by, uh, charging the Requester the standard USPS postage rate. Uh, and finally, that concludes my presentation unless there are any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions, Board Members? Sounds like this is long overdue, uh, would be my suggestion and really appreciate the thoroughness of the presentation. Robert, you had a.
I don't have any questions. I'm supportive of the notion, but I, uh, whereas I didn't shoot at the Lincoln Missile, uh. Site, I'm so old, I remember well the Cuban Missile Crisis and the fact that the missile site existed. Which is a backward way of getting to the fact that we're so well-served by our county museums here in Placer County, and. I love the photographs that you have in your presentation and embracing our history is so critical to moving forward properly. So that was just a plug. That connects back to the prior.
And we want more museums, right? Just saying.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any public comment on this item? Oh, I'm sorry, we're opening a public hearing on this resolution. Then we'll close the public hearing. I'll accept a motion. I have Wygant and Holmes. All those in favor? I, any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, the audience is dwindling down, so we're on item ten, and Suzanne is here, uh, from Human Resources. This is page two seventy nine of our board packet, updates to our uncodified schedule of classifications and compensation ordinance.
Morning, Members of the Board and Madam Chair. I have two items before you today for approval. One is to introduce the uncodified ordinance, waiving the oral reading to amend the schedule of classifications and compensation ordinance. We're doing three things today. We're creating new classifications. We're abolishing old, um, and outdated classifications. And we're retitling to existing classifications. The second action is to introduce a codified ordinance, waive oral reading, amending Placer County Code, section three point one two point zero three zero. To recognize the two new classifications of forensic pathologist board eligible and forensic pathologist board certified. I'm going to go ahead and start with a little background, um, on the forensic pathologist. Uh, HR conducted a study at the request of the Sheriff's Office to look at their two positions. Um, that are allocated to, um, conduct coroner services and autopsies. Since two thousand fifteen, um, the county has been using the class specification of physician. And then adding a special pay for the specialized training in forensic pathology. What the department was wanting us to explore is to look and see if the duties to be assigned were significantly different enough. To be, to warrant a separate classification. Just as some background for you, on average. Forensic pathologists require between ten and thirteen years of higher education to achieve proficiency in their field. As well as have the skills necessary to testify in court. There's only two forensic pathology fellowship training programs in California. And the entire county only has five hundred full-time board-certified forensic pathologists. This number leaves agencies struggling to fill positions as the demand for these specialists is high. Only about forty new forensic pathologists graduate each year, which leaves Placer County competing with several other, um, surrounding counties for this. This unicorn, for lack of a better term. We also contract with, um, local counties and jurisdictions to provide that service. But we are competing as well with other agencies in California, including Sacramento County. Based on the local labor market analysis and an analysis of the duties to be performed. We obtained feedback from both the position incumbents and. we obtained feedback from both the position incumbents and sheriff's office executive management. It did warn the creation of two new classifications of forensic pathologists. As far as salary, given the recruitment challenges that we foresee in filling these positions, as well as the market data in our relevant labor market, there was a recommendation to increase the base salary by approximately 5%, as well as to roll in that special pay for forensic specialty, because that will be a minimum qualification for these positions. As a result of the development of these two new classifications, we're also requesting that Placer County Code be updated to basically add these two new class titles to section 3.12.030. We're striking out language that identifies the forensic pathologist specialty on the physician, because we will no longer be using that for to fill these two positions. And we also wanted to add the ability to obtain special pays. If someone after 13 years of postgraduate study decides to obtain further training in neonatal pathology and pediatric pathology, what we found is that in the labor market, approximately half agencies were providing an additional incentive of about 10%. So we are also proposing that as well. It's an unclassified position with the two levels, board-certified and board-eligible. It's been approved by both the HR Director and the Acting County Executive Officer. So the first recommendation would be to add those two new positions to the salary schedule. The other two studies that we did are more cleanup and general maintenance that HR does regularly with our class specifications. We recently studied the executive secretary and the administrative secretary class specifications. We obtained feedback from all position incumbents and updated language in the class specifications. But one of the things that we found, based on feedback from the incumbents and looking at the labor market, was that the term secretary is pretty dated. So we're recommending administrative assistant and executive assistant for those new job titles. Salaries seem to be within market, so there's no recommendations there. And finally, as a result of a reorganization in the county executive's office several months ago, the current single-position class of financial budget operations manager was reclassified to a different position, and that classification was deemed to be obsolete and no longer needed. So we are recommending that that classification be abolished from the salary schedule. There's no fiscal impacts with the re-titling of the secretaries or with the abolishment of the position from CEO. The fiscal impact to the sheriff's office to adjust the salary of the forensic pathologist is around $98,000, and that will be absorbed in their budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Great presentation. Are there any questions, board members? I'm not seeing any. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I'd entertain a motion. Holmes and Wygant, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Public Works, item number 11. We have three items here. The first is the Washoe County Tart Connect Zone winner 2223. Jamie's here to present this. Hi, Jamie.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am before you today looking for approval on a funding agreement that we have in place with the Trucky-North Tahoe Transportation Management Association. This is for the funding of the Washoe County Zone of the Tart Connect Program. In March, on March 30th of 2021, your board approved a two-year pilot with Tahoe Downtown LLC for the operation of the Tart Connect Program through our inter-local operating agreement with Washoe County Regional Transportation Commission. We do operate service and contract for service within Washoe County. So this funding agreement pays us for that service that we are contracting for. We do receive some direct funding directly from Washoe County RTC. And then the remaining funding is put together through a collaborative effort of funding partners up in the Incline Village, Crystal Bay area of North Lake Tahoe. Rather than having a single individual funding agreements with all those entities, they have a funding agreement with the Transportation Management Association, and then we have a single funding agreement with them. It works to do it through the TMA, as it is a membership-based organization, providing service to both public and private entities throughout the North Tahoe Truckee region. It does not have any physical impact on Placer County budget. It is just funding a service that we are contracting for on behalf of one of our partners. So with that, I am looking for approval or authorization for the Director of Public Works or designate to execute amendment number one to contract number 001307 with the Trucky-North Tahoe Transportation Management Association, TMA, for the pass-through funding for the operation of the Tart Connect Micro Transit Service, micro-transit service within Washoe County Zone from December 15th through June 27th, 2023, in the amount of $479,458.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Jamie? I always have one. What's the estimated ridership? And what did they do last year in that section? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the exact ridership numbers, but I do know that that zone summer-over-summer was up 40%. System as a whole, we were up 112% summer-over-summer within all the zones that we operate.
That's great. I know that it's hugely popular, and I really appreciate Washoe County raising the funds so that we can make it seamless and serve so many individuals. Earlier, we heard the Squaw Valley, I'm sorry, Pelisay, Olympic Valley.
SATCO.
Yeah, SATCO. Thank you. Are they going to change that from SAT?
I do believe so, yes.
Yeah, because right now it's, anyway. And looking at their ridership numbers, I was just interested in comparing. Great, thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Okay, then we'll come back to the board. Do we have a motion to approve? Thank you, Supervisors Jones and Wygant. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 11B, page 293 of our packet, the baseline signals project. We have two items, the MOU and then item C, the consultant contract.
Yes, and I'll be presenting both on behalf of Kyle, the second one. So, good morning. My name's Kevin Ordway. I'm with Department of Public Works. The first item is for, or action we're requesting is for your board to authorize the Director of Public Works or designate to execute a memorandum of understanding between the county, the city of Roseville, and Sutter County to equally split an estimated maximum total cost of $1.2 million, with each agency contributing up to $400,000 to fund the design and permitting of three new traffic signals along baseline Riego Road upon risk management and county council concurrents. And for any of you who've driven baseline road/ Riego Road once it crosses into Sutter County recently, you know that the congestion is just at an unacceptable level. And while there are plans to improve this corridor in the future, we need to do something now. And so one of the main contributors, we're seeing there's three signal or stop sign-controlled intersections, and we hit peak hours, the stop signs just back traffic up. And we feel that putting signals in these three locations will greatly improve traffic flow. It affects all three agencies, and we all have a vested interest, so we've agreed to split the cost equally. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Kevin. Supervisor Gore, no questions, but thank you, thank you. I really am glad that we're able to move forward, at least with the planning of this. We've been working on it for a couple of years now, and I just really appreciate the effort and the partnership with the city of Roseville and Sutter County as we try to at least do one step to mitigate the traffic. Not seeing other board comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Okay, then I'd accept a motion to enter into this MOU. Gore and Jones, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. And then we'll go on to the consultant contract for this item.
Yes, so we went through procurement services, and we sent out a solicitation to over 1,000 firms. We only received one response from Mark Thomas and Company. We evaluated their proposal, found they were qualified, and they could meet our needs very adequately on this project. So we negotiated a cost proposal with them, and we used that to actually form the MOU, so we knew what we were going to be spending between the three agencies. Which brings me here to you today. We're requesting that you authorize the Director of Public Works or designate to execute a contract with Mark Thomas and Company, contract number 1306, for a total contract amount not to exceed $953,261 upon risk management and county council concurrents, and authorize future contract amendments up to $95,326, consistent with the procurement policy.
Great. Are there questions? Yes, Supervisor Jones?
I was just curious as to your, probably your guess, as to why nobody else submitted anything for this?
So we reached out to multiple firms, and what we found out is, at the time we released the RFP, there were a lot of other really big projects on the streets. Apparently, a lot of people are looking for engineering design services, and this wasn't a real high-dollar fee. And so a lot of firms, they have to make decisions on go/no-go on which proposals they're going to go after. And Mark Thomas really wanted to work with us again. We've worked with them in the past, and they submitted. The other firm said they just didn't have the bandwidth.
Well, glad we got somebody who's actually interested in working with us.
Yes.
Great. Are there any public comments on this item? Okay, then we'll come back to the board. I'd entertain a motion. Gore and Jones, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Before we go to 12, they have had a request to go to our supplemental item 12.1, which is our mosquito fire debris removal program. I believe Dave is here with us. And on this one, we have a number. This is six action items, correct?
Correct.
So quite a few, and it looks like we have a whole team coming up. Thank you.
Indeed. Good afternoon, Board Chair, members of the board. Dave Atkinson, Assistant Director of Emergency Services, here to present to your board a follow-up item from your board's action to adopt the urgency ordinance, establishing standards for the removal of debris generated by the mosquito fire. Of course, as you recall, the mosquito fire started just over two months ago, grew to almost 77,000 acres, and resulted in the destruction of 39 structures as identified by CAL FIRE's inspection. That program provided the option for property owners to either partake in a consolidated program, which we'll talk more about in a second, or an alternative program, which basically allows them to hire their own contractor, and then using the same standards as the consolidated program, proceed with cleanup, but at their own expense. So knowing that the fire, the way the fire season was shaping up in California, and in consultation with CALOES, who unfortunately do the number of catastrophic fires we've had over the years, is now a nationally recognized leader in debris cleanup for disasters, we came to the conclusion that we were likely heading for having to be more involved than we were in the river fire last year in any kind of government-run cleanup program. With that in mind, we put together a multidisciplinary team that includes environmental health, environmental engineering, county council, risk management, procurement, the budget team, and of course CAL, or excuse me, CALOES, and of course, your Office of Emergency Services. This was put together just given that there was going to be a wide range of things that we were going to have to take on that the state actually had done for us during the river fire last year. So we'll start with funding. The funding model for this project was developed with the understanding that CALOES could provide financial assistance to the county under the California Disaster Assistance Act. This has not been authorized at the moment. Unfortunately, we're waiting to hear from the president on whether or not there'll be a major disaster declaration, which would change the model a little bit, on the state side at least. But we are actively pursuing approval on that. Also, reimbursement under CDAA is generally set at 75%. Thanks to our being current with our local hazard mitigation plan, we do have the opportunity and have already sought that that cost share be reduced even further. This is something that both Mariposa County and I understand Eldorado County are will be seeking from the governor as well. In terms of procurement, we're going to make full use of the system that the state has set up for us. Essentially, they have a kind of a two-pronged approach. The first is they'll bring, we'll bring in a very highly technical, very experienced monitoring and assessment consultant. They've set up a master services agreement for this process, so that very high, just because of the nature of this work, you really need pretty high-level, almost national-level firms who can just bring together the total package of different things that are needed, from air monitoring to arborist, archaeology, whatever else is needed to make it through the project successfully. With that said, the project team has reviewed a response from Tetra Tech, which was the number-one-ranked firm in the state's master services agreement process, and we found that that their response does indeed meet our county's needs for this program. And that would be one of our recommendations of your board is to provide delegated authority to approve that contract. The other prong is, of course, the debris removal itself. This will be done by an expedited public works-type process, again, using some model documents that the state has provided. We are working, as we speak, to mold those to fit our county requirements as far as procurement, because that is a requirement for reimbursement, is that we follow our own procurement standards. And we look to be ready to be, to go out to bid, as it could be as early as next week if we get your board's approval today. And that is the second item that we'll be asking your board's approval on, is to delegate authority to the county executive officer to award that subsequent contract. Collaboration with Eldorado County, once again, we find ourselves in another fire that didn't seem to respect county boundaries. And so just as we found ourselves in collaboration with Nevada County last year on the river fire on watershed issues, we are looking to collaborate with Eldorado County this year on the debris cleanup itself. You've heard oftentimes, fire and law come and talk about unified command and the response, and this is very much very similar to that same model where we would come together. We all have a common interest to get this fire cleaned up, to get that ash out of the watershed and allow people to start to recover and rebuild as quickly as possible. And so we're looking to essentially set up a joint command at our offices here in Auburn, where Tetra Tech would be, Eldorado would have representatives as well, and we would attack this essentially as a common team to get this work done. Schedule, well, the rain is here, thankfully, as we need it. But that also means that time is even more of the essence, just in terms of doing what we can to get this cleaned up as quickly as possible, just to prevent this debris from getting out into our watershed. That's the last thing we need. The other time-sensitive issue is that reimbursement under California Disaster Assistance Act does have a six-month timeline, and so we are moving quickly, but carefully, to get this work done and meet that timeline. Environmental impact, the state has set up a series of emergency suspensions as part of some actions that the governor can take to ensure that we'll maintain compliance with environmental regulations, but allow us to move quickly through that process. So lastly, fiscal impact, and I'll go through this a bit just to make sure it's clear. So we are asking for a total project of $8.8 million. Half of that would be attributable to Placer County, the other half would be for Eldorado County. As it turned out, the number of structures in Eldorado and the number of structures in Placer was exactly equal of 39 and 39. And so just as a way to set this up, we use that as a basis to start out with just a 50-50 split. So we're asking for your boards, why we're going to ask for your board's authority to award the total amount for both counties, Placer would only be obligated to pay its half, and that's part of that last action, which would be for the county executive officer to work out the details of a memorandum of understanding with Eldorado on exactly the mechanics of that, of that cost split. So an $8.8 million project, we estimate $2.8 million associated with the assessment and monitoring, which we go to Tetra Tech. $6 million for debris removal is our estimate for the solicitation that would go out to bid if your board approves. Six million dollars for debris removal is our estimate for the solicitation that would go out to bid if your Board approves. And then, uh, again, that split with, with Eldorado County and the mechanics of that to be worked out. Uh, we're asking for an initial funding from the general fund of four-point-four million dollars to essentially seed the county's half of the project, and that would be put into a capital project that's been set up in Public Works. Uh, Public Works is very adept at these types of projects, which is uh, why I've asked them to be part of the team so that we've just got a really experienced public work contracting team on this project. If we're unsuccessful in getting the CDAA reimbursement reduced, the county share, if every single structure was to sign up, and remember, this is a voluntary program, so people have the option of doing it themselves at their own cost or participating in the consolidated program. If all thirty-nine of those uh, decide for the consolidated program, costs to the county could be one-point-four million dollars. But again, we're going to seek, uh, to reduce that as low as we possibly can. And, uh, I did want to make mention to you in the actions, uh, uh, there is only one resolution that would handle actions three and four for this item. So with that, I think I'll take a pause and, and, uh, be available for questions.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Um, and are there any Board questions on this item? I'm not seeing any. I will look for public comment on this item. Okay, I'm going to try to get this right because we have now five actions because three and four are combined. So we need individual motions and some roll calls. So the first one is an individual motion to approve the budget amendment. Do I have that motion? Gore and Wygant, this is a roll call. Gore?
I.
Wygant?
Yep.
Holmes?
I.
Jones?
Gusson.
I. Number two, approve the budget amendment, community and agency support an amount of four-point-four and cancel general fund, general, uh, reserves in the amount of four-point-four million dollars. Gore and Holmes, this is just majority vote. Is that roll call on this one as well? Gore?
I.
Wygant?
Yep.
Holmes?
I.
Jones?
Gusson.
I. Now, this is an action for items three and four combined on the resolution. Do I have a motion for that?
And I'll second.
Holmes and Gore, and this is a roll call vote is?
No.
No, this is not. This is a majority. Okay, all those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed, any abstentions? And then on to item five. Holmes and Jones. I'm saying that this is majority vote on these next two. Okay, all those in favor?
I.
I. I. Any opposed, any abstentions? And then finally, item six, do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Supervisors Jones and Wygant, all those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed, any abstentions? Great job. I know this is so beneficial to our community. Thank you for being such experts. I'm sorry you're getting so much practice at this. Supervisor Holmes, did you have a comment?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
And Jane does.
Yes, just a brief note of thanks to you, Dave, for being so helpful in working with our Placer County Water Agency. I know initially they feared the worst in terms of impacts to their water infrastructure. Thankfully, it didn't turn out to be that way, but still you were very helpful in assisting them with this process.
Thank you. Great. Thanks very much, everyone. Uh, we will now go back to item twelve A, and this is the CSAC, California State Association of Counties, and an appointment of Supervisor Gore for the twenty-twenty-three calendar year. I don't know who's some.
I can speak.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, CSAC does a request every year for us to appoint a member prior to their annual conference, which this year begins on November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. This is, as we all can see, a little out of sync with our normal appointments that come in January. So we do request that the Board make this appointment. And then this item will come back in January to be reconsidered by the Board for the full remainder of the year. If the Board were to take no action at this time, Supervisor Gore would still remain in this seat as they would just default to our prior year appointment. Any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, I have, I have a question. Um, it says here under the provisions of the CSAC Constitution, members of the Board of Directors and Alternates are nominated by the respective Boards of Supervisors and appointed to the Executive Committee to a one-year term of office commencing on the first day of the annual conference. So, um, but that says the first day of the conference for a one year. So it doesn't make sense that in January we can change that.
If you go further into the CSAC memo, it does actually state that a change can be made by the Board at any time.
Oh, okay. So my only question is they're providing this under their provisions of their own constitution. What is our Board policy, or do we have one regarding the, our appointments to our boards and commissions?
So we've been looking at this in the Governance Manual and myself, uh, Jane and Karen have come up with a process on how this will look. We have a few that we are cleaning up and we've reached out. I've reached out to CSAC and Laughco and a few of the other ones that have kind of oddball regulations and terms. Not all of these committees that the Board serves on have terms, some do and some don't. So we'll be bringing that forward when we bring in the Governance Manual to the Board and, um, it'll spell out how the, the practice of how we'll
So are we actually creating a policy?
We are creating a practice of how appointments
Just a practice.
Will be handled. It'll be built into the Governance Manual. Obviously, that's you know, at the discretion of the Board on following. Yeah, we'll review it and, and make those decisions. I think that's exactly to your point of how we come up with these appointments and
Yeah.
This one is just one where we would like somebody to represent us in November.
No, I understand that. It's just concerning that, that there's, they're providing for it under their CSAC constitution, yet we're a Board of Supervisors and we don't have any kind of regulating document like that governing our appointments. That, that's all. That's by kind of my comment. Thank you.
And we, and we can certainly look at best practices from other counties. I think that's what we've been asking staff to look at is best practices so that we make sure we're, um, appointing our committees and commissions appropriately for all these different situations. Supervisor Gore?
Uh, yes, thank you, and appreciate the question. I actually asked that this be brought um, to, and an item so we could discuss it. I'll be at the CSAC conference next week, and I serve as the co-chair of the Housing, Land Use and Transportation Committee, I believe. Um, so I appreciate the support, and of course, we can change it if somebody really wants to serve on CSAC next year.
Great. So I'd accept a motion to approve this item. I will second. Oh, thank you. Holmes will second. All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, I think now we are going to, uh, conclude our morning agenda items. We have some timed items this afternoon. We'll be going to to close session. We do have an additional item on our closed session, and will you be covering that, Karen?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
The Board will now adjourn to closed session to consider four items of existing litigation. Of the four potential cases under anticipated litigation, potential exposure to litigation, one of these potential cases will be continued to November twenty-ninth. On the supplemental agenda, we also have an initiation of litigation item to be considered. And the final item will be public employment, county executive officer.
Okay, the Board has returned from closed session and County Council will give a report.
The Board met in closed session to consider the following. Under existing litigation, Inray Baumbach, the Board heard a report and authorized settlement on a four, a five-zero vote. In the matter of Boss, Inray Baskeen, the Board heard a report and authorized settlement on a five-zero vote. In the matter of Inray Ryan, the Board heard a report and authorized settlement on a five-zero vote. In the matter of Sprint Telefoni, at all, the Board heard a report and provided direction on a five-zero vote. Under anticipation under anticipated litigation in the first potential case, the Board heard a report and provided direction. On the second potential case, the Board heard a report and provided direction. On the third potential case, the Board heard a report and provided direction. All of the above were on a five-zero vote. On the supplemental agenda, we had initiation of litigation, one potential case. The Board heard a report and continued the matter to the twenty-ninth of November. That concludes this portion of the report out of closed session.
Thank you, and we do still have a remaining item that we will be going back into closed session on. But we wanted to get in and try to start this afternoon's timed items on time or close to on time. So our first item is our two o'clock timed item. Uh, this is item six on our agenda, found on page one seventeen of the Board packet. And this is, uh, the rescission of the village at Palisades specific plan project approvals. Good afternoon, David.
Afternoon, Chair Gusson and members of the Board, David Kwong, your Agency Director. And I just want to stage a little bit here, um, Patrick Dobbs, our Senior Planner, will be presenting the, uh, Boardroom before you. Um, after he gives you some background, basically what the action before you that we're requesting is for you to rescind the approvals and decertify the IR, and basically that is court-directed. Um, what I wanted to also say is in, in the background, we also, even though it's really not a part of the decision before you, we wanted to identify for you what the public process would look like. So there's a there's a informational slide in there that shows what the information opportunities will still be regarding uh, any further, um, continuance of this, uh, application. And so we've identified that, uh, in the slide again, and really there are still several opportunities for a public comment as we move through uh, the public process for, for this and address the court-directed deficiencies regarding the, uh, deficiencies in the IR from the secret process. So I just want to set that stage, but basically before you, what you're going to hear after you hear again from us in terms of background will be our request of you to rescind the approvals and to decertify the IR. Thank you, and I'm going to pass it on to Patrick.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors. Patrick Dobbs with the Planning Services Division, and the item before you is a request to rescind the approvals for the Village at Palisades Tahoe specific plan. This is formerly known as the Village at Squaw Valley specific plan. And this item was continued from, uh, your October twenty-fifth Board of Supervisors meeting. I just have a short presentation. I'm going to give a general overview of the specific plan and the two thousand sixteen approvals uh, and discuss the subsequent litigation and next steps. Um, the specific plan is located in eastern Placer County in the community of Olympic Valley. It's nine miles south of the town of Truckee and seven miles northwest of Tahoe City. Uh, the specific plan is located within the Squaw Valley General Plan, which is a community plan with policies and zoning. The specific plan area is outlined in red. It consists of the main village uh, shown on the main part of the slide, and the east parcel is shown in the inset in the lower right. The main village is at the west end of the valley. Uh, it's eighty-five acres and located at the existing ski resort base area. The area is predominantly parking lots today. Uh, there's residential development to the north, ski lifts and related operations to the south. Existing resort accommodations and facilities to the west and a meadow and golf course to the east. Uh, the east parcel, again, in the inset is eight acres. It's at the east in the valley on Olympic Valley Road, about a third of a mile west of the intersection of Highway eighty-nine. It's just across the street from the Olympic Valley Public Service District and Fire Station, and generally surrounded by single-family residential development. This map shows the Squaw Valley General Plan land uses, and the outline of the specific plan is in black. And really, there's two points that I'm trying to convey with this slide. Uh, first, what jumps out is the village commercial zoning in red. These are the opportunity areas. The areas in red can be built out. Um, the second point I want to convey is this is what the land use pattern will revert back to uh, when the approvals for the specific plan are rescinded. So contrast that with the approved specific plan land use designation. The commercial areas are concentrated into two nodes. The red is the village commercial core, and the yellow is the village commercial neighborhood. Uh, the heavy commercial, uh, mountain operations area shown in purple has been moved to the west end of the plan area. Blue is remaining day skier parking. And there is better alignment connectivity and an increase in the area of open space and recreation areas. They're shown in green designated as conservation preserve and forest recreation. Buildout under the specific plan would result in fourteen-hundred-and-ninety-three bedrooms. Those would be, uh, divided amongst eight-hundred-and-fifty units. There's two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand square feet of commercial development, including skier services, restaurants, et cetera. Of the two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand, ninety-one thousand of that is replacement. So this is a scaling back of the theoretical development potential uh, that is otherwise allowed under the Squaw Valley General Plan land use designations. And just real quickly, uh, for the east parcel, the zoning is entrance commercial surrounded by conservation preserve. This is an illustrative of the planned buildout. Uh, the village commercial core is the higher intensity area with residential and tourist accommodation above retail and restaurants. Uh, this area includes the Mount Adventure Camp. This is a large indoor recreation and activity facility. This would include or anticipated to include, uh, swimming pools, climbing walls, an arcade, movie theater, bowling alleys. The village neighborhood is a lesser intensity, quieter setting. It has a similar range of accommodations, including, including timeshare, hotel condominium, fractional ownership cabins. But there are fewer neighborhood service, commercial and retail offerings. All of this is, uh, set within a mixed-use pedestrian environment with an interconnect, interconnected network of walkways and bike paths throughout the village. Other notable project components include, but are not limited to, comprehensive stream restoration. There's trailhead improvements to the Granite Chief and Shirley Canyon Trails. There's public transit improvements as well as dedication and construction of a full-time fire station. And just quickly, a closer look at the east parcel. East parcel would allow employee housing for up to three hundred employees. Uh, it's predominantly configured in a studio and dormitory style accommodations. There's the employee recreation and fitness center integrated in the building. Uh, there's a two-level parking structure with an employee shuttle back and forth between the resort. There's a shipping and receiving facility for the resort, as well as a market and, uh, new class one trail connector along the frontage. So shifting to the project history, project was originally approved by the Board of Supervisors in November two thousand sixteen. That approval consisted of certification of the project's final EIR, adoption of the Village at Squaw Valley specific plan, including the policy document as well as the development standards and design guidelines. A rezone of the specific plan area, amendments to the Squaw Valley General Plan and land use ordinance, approval of a development agreement, a large lot, testing tentative map and water supply assessment. The following month, in December of two thousand sixteen, Sierra Watch filed a sequel lawsuit with claims related to, uh, failing to adequately describe the environmental setting of the Lake Tahoe Basin, impacts on emergency evacuations, transit mitigation measures, uh, uh, or traffic mitigation measures, transit impacts, greenhouse gas analysis, noise impacts, the project's water source and EIR alternatives. In August of two thousand eighteen, the trial court ruled in favor of the county and denied the petition in its entirety. In October two thousand eighteen, the petitioner filed an appeal of the Superior Court ruling. And in August of two thousand twenty-one, this Court of Appeals ruled that the county had properly analyzed air quality and climate change impacts and resulted mitigation. The decision not to recirculate the IR based on altered emissions, traffic mitigation measures, and seven of the eight arguments raised for wildfire impacts. However, uh, the Court of Appeals did determine that the EIR analysis was deficient and that further analysis was needed in the areas related to discussion of Lake Tahoe water qual, water quality, evacuation times for wildfires, uh, discussion of noise impacts, including, uh, mitigation measure for construction noise, as well as traffic impact mitigation measure. So because of these deficiencies in the EIR, the project approvals must be vacated. And so in August of two thousand twenty-two, uh, the court issued a preemptory writ of mandate. This requires the county to rescind the approvals uh, by November twenty-second. And in a moment, I'm going to ask you to take that action, uh, but first, in anticipation of the question, what's next? Um, the applicant wants to move forward. The applicant wants to move forward with the project. The EIR consultant is Ascent Environmental. So Ascent County Staff and the applicant are working to address these sections of the EIR that the court said were inadequate. This is what's being prepared is called a partially revised draft environmental impact report, RDEIR. And this work is nearly complete, and this revised draft environmental impact report will be circulated for public review soon. The boxes with a white text are to identify public hearings, of which there will be at least four. And so during the public comment period for the RDEIR, there will be a public hearing with the planning commission to receive comments on the draft EIR. And then those comments received on the draft will be responded to in the final EIR, which will also be circulated for public review. So now I'm on the three boxes on the right. The project will go to the Olympic Valley Municipal Advisory Council or yeah, council for a public hearing to make a recommendation on the project. The project will go to the Placer County Planning Commission for a public hearing to make a recommendation on the project and revised final EIR. And then finally, it'll come back to the Board of Supervisors for a public hearing to determine the merits of the project. And finally, EIR certification. The project website is at the bottom of the page here. This is really the best place for the public to stay informed on as the project is reinitiated. We'll be updating that page as soon as the public hearing schedule becomes more clear. But first, the matter that is before you today. Pursuant to the court's directive, staff requests the Board of Supervisors rescind the approvals for the village at Palisades Tahoe specific plan. To do so requires three actions of the board. First, to adopt a resolution to rescind four resolutions that were previously adopted for the project. They include the resolution certifying the village at Squaw Valley specific plan final environmental impact report and errata, including the mitigation monitoring reporting program and finding findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations. Rescind the resolution approving the village at Squaw Valley specific plan. Rescind the resolution amending the Squaw Valley General Plan and land use ordinance, and rescind the resolution approving the water supply assessment. Second action is to adopt an ordinance to rescind three ordinances that were previously adopted for the project. They include an ordinance approving the development standards and design guidelines for the village at Squaw Valley specific plan. An ordinance approving the rezone of the specific plan area. And rescind an ordinance approving the development agreement. And the third and final action is to rescind approval of the large lot vesting tentative subdivision map. We did receive one comment letter on the project. I believe it seemed to support the rescission. So that concludes staff's presentation. We can answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, David. I do believe that we had received a couple of comments, public comments. I just want to make sure that those are available. There was quite a lengthy comment.
We received a large packet from Caroline, and we have included all documents into the administrative record, most of which came in last night in the evening hours. So we have all of it, though, and it is part of the admin record for this item.
Great, thank you. Just want to make sure that we reflect the public comment received on that. Board members, are there questions that you have? At this point, okay, then we'll go to public comment on this item. I want to make sure that we can come back to the board then for further follow-up questions. Good afternoon.
Chair Gustafson, members of the board, my name's Whit Manley. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I think Patrick did a good job of summarizing what brings us here today, so I won't belabor the point, but I do have a couple of comments I want to offer and also answer any questions you might have. As Patrick indicated, the board approved the project certified the IR in November of twenty sixteen and prevailed at the trial court. Sierra Watch did file an appeal to the Third District Court of Appeal in August of twenty eighteen. And then the Court of Appeal finally issued its decision three years later. Three years later, you may wonder if that's a long time. The answer is, yes, it is unusually long time. It's kind of frustrating to have the Court of Appeal take that long, but it is what it is. There actually is a provision in sequel that says appeals are supposed to be resolved within a year. That didn't happen in this instance. So be it. I do want to say that I think county staff and your consultants did a good job on the EIR. I also want to acknowledge in all humility that my opinion matters a lot less than somebody who's on the Third District Court of Appeal. And in this instance, they've issued their decision. It's unambiguous. Our task is to salute and do what they ask. There's no mystery to the issues on which they ruled against the county. The information exists. It's just simply information that needs to be bundled up, put in an EIR and circulated for public review. You may hear from folks, some of the documents that just came in may have voiced this. I haven't seen them. You may hear from some folks that the court said that the project is too big or needs to be reconfigured or reconceived. That is not what the Court of Appeal did. That's not its role. In fact, the judgment issued here makes it clear that ultimately the discretion belongs to the county, to the Board of Supervisors. And that's an exercise of discretion and judgment that the court cannot and recognizes it should not interfere with. So our task is to do the further analysis that the court wants us to do so that this board can once again exercise its discretion. So the ball's in our court. We support the efforts of county staff, of county consultants to prepare the revised draft EIR. We support that in any way we can. If there's any information that we can offer, we'd be happy to do that. We appreciate their professionalism and their efforts. I want to say unambiguously, my client remains committed to this project. My client believes that this project is in the best interest of the county. My client recognizes that there are citizens that disagree with that. They will advocate for preserving the parking lot and blocking restoration of the creek. That's their prerogative. That's the way the process works. Ultimately, we'll all get our say. The board will get to decide. We know that you want to have a public process. We support that and endorse that, opportunities for public input. And we also recognize that the membership of the commission and this board is not what it was in November of twenty sixteen. Because of the passage of time. So we want this board to make sure that it gets its questions answered as well. So we look forward to the release of the draft EIR, revised draft EIR on the topics that we need to address. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and we appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Whit, and I apologize. I should have asked for the applicant to give the equal time to the applicant that as we did to county staff. So I'm not seeing any questions at this point, but we do want to continue on and now open public comment on this item. So are there any members of the public here today in the room that would like to speak to the board on this item? I'm not seeing any in the room. Are there any online that would like to speak to the board on this?
We do have some online. Caroline, can you unmute your mic and give your comments?
My name is Caroline Vertonghen. My husband and I, we have been an owner since two thousand and three. And I thank you for allowing us to participate.
Caroline, can can I just, we are getting quite a rainstorm down here, and it's somewhat hard to hear you. So could you speak up just a little bit? Hopefully, it's coming down as snow in Tahoe, but it's
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. I will lean into the speaker a little more. So what I was saying is, I thank you for your time and we have been participating in this whole process, even before the two thousand sixteen. We felt it was important that residents who have lived and who have experienced the management as it has changed from KSL to, well, first, when we bought it, it was Interwest, which was quite a unique experience. And then it changed to KSL and then Altera Palisades Tahoe. And and I feel it's important that you, that the Board of Supervisors get a an idea of what we have gone through to help you make, help the process in the decision-making, to understand what the shortcomings are. And as you know, presentations can always be wonderful, but they have to be realistic. And so the the comments that I submitted was partially to comment on the intent and the goals that were set at the original project in two thousand sixteen. I'm very glad that they scaled it back, and I also understand we need change. But we have to understand that we have limited resources, and it should be done in a in a in a very nice way that that we don't impact the community more as as it has impacted because they were not able to build affordable housing for staffing. And so I also want to let you know that we, many owners in the village, we are supporting housekeeping staff from Truckee. He was actually, this organization was actually the housekeeping manager at the at the Squaw Valley Resort, but for some reason he was let go. And so we want to support him, but we constantly feel which I tried to provide as much as I could from from general management to take over the rental control, even though they don't have the resources. That's my take on this. I will continue to help you with the process. And thank you so much for your time and dedication to keep Blaster County and especially Olympic Valley and the region of Lake Tahoe so beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline.
David, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. David, can you unmute your mic?
I just did. Thank you. My name is David Stepper. I'm the chairman of the Squaw Valley, Olympic Valley MAC. And in early September, there were two information, informational meetings held before the Olympic Valley MAC and NITRAC. And I thought it would be informative to the board to hear the principal concern of the public that was attended those meetings. And it was fairly unanimous that the public was concerned that the revised DIR would be looking primarily at the four items that the Court of Appeals raised and would not be looking at what are the current conditions with regard to wildfire traffic noise that exist in two thousand twenty-two as opposed to what existed in two thousand sixteen. And so they wanted to express their hope that when the EIR was finally presented in its final form, that the different categories would be updated to the environmental conditions as they exist today and not as they existed six years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Comment. We'll see if there's any other public comment. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom, or if you're in the room, please come forward. Not seeing any. Okay, then we'll close the public comment. Staff, would you like to address any of the issues that were raised? I think many of us, well, some of us were at the at the meeting for both the Olympic Valley MAC and NITRAC. And I think Mr. Steppner portrayed the concerns and the confusion that this has because the courts have taken so long to get us a ruling. And so I guess Clayton, you're going to address.
Sure, happy to do so.
Those issues, yeah.
Clayton Cook, supervising deputy county counsel. So, yes, as Whit had mentioned and was mentioned in the staff report, this project, the Court of Appeal indicated through its ruling that there were certain items that needed to be revisited, additional analysis provided for that. So the revised EIR will have that additional analysis on those four topics. And that is what the court has indicated it needs to for that EIR to pass muster, to be an adequate document. So that's what's needed on terms of the EIR for purposes of making sure that's a complete document. This project still will come before your board, and your board is going to have to decide whether this project makes sense. And so it will look at the the full package of those pieces, the the parts of the project. And in consideration of that project, you can decide whether or not certain things need to be looked at or addressed. And so I guess for purposes of the environmental impact report, we have clear direction as to what needs to be looked at and addressed in terms of the analysis. But for purposes of your decision, there is a much broader scope of things that you can look at. So and that's something staff will be looking at, too. Are those items, what has changed since that timeframe in terms of kind of, are there any things needed for this project for purposes of your evaluation of whether or not this is a good project to approve? So the the window or the 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 scope of what's looked at for the environmental impact report is a bit narrower. But for purposes of evaluating this project, that scope is bigger.
Okay, and and I think that goes to Mr. Steppner's concerns and many of the public that were at the meet the meeting. But in addition, any other changed conditions or issues that the board is aware of? Just earlier today, we looked at the micro mass transit system and supporting that moving forward as well. So looking at all of the issues that have changed or may not have changed in the, okay. Any other questions, board members on this item? Not seeing any? Okay, then we have a series of actions to move forward. You see the requested actions. And these require individual motions. Do they also require roll call or just individual motions? Okay. So with that, we've conducted the public hearing, and now it's time to adopt a resolution to rescind. And you'll see those outlined A through D. Do I have a motion? Holmes and Gore, all those in favor? I. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, then we'll move on to item number three. Rescind approval of large lot vesting tentative sub. Oh, adopt an ordinance to rescind the following, and this is A through C. Okay, yes, thank you. Do I have a motion? Holmes and Wygant, all those in favor? I. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and then finally, rescind the approval of the large lot vesting tentative subdivision map. Holmes and Wygant, all those in favor? I. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it and look forward to having much more discussion on this item as we move forward. Okay. We're five minutes early for our next item, so we'll take a quick break because we have no other business to do. And we'll get ready for our two forty-five timed item. Our two forty-five timed item, this is a report by our county executive team on forest resiliency update. And Becky, we will turn it over to you to start and introduce all the people we have here in the room.
And we have, we're very pleased to have many interested in this topic today. So yes, good afternoon, Chair Gustafson, members of the board, Becky Riggan from the County Executive Office to introduce today's conversation on wildfire mitigation and forest resiliency. I'm joined today by State and County Fire Chief Brian Estes, Ag Commissioner Josh Hunsinger, Regional Forest Health Coordinator Carrie Timmer, Placer County Water Agency General Manager Andy Feco, and CEO Analyst Sarah Poindexter, who supports this effort. We are all very happy to be before you today to provide an update on this topic on this very rainy day, particularly welcome after this year's fire season. At your strategic planning session in January of two thousand twenty-one, your board identified wildfire mitigation and forest health as its highest priority. Since that time, staff have focused on establishing the program, hiring our regional forest health coordinator Carrie Timmer, identified internal and external stakeholders, identified and pursued several grant opportunities, and conducted preliminary meetings with our internal stakeholders of CAL FIRE, Ag Commissioner, OES, and CEO. and conducted preliminary meetings with our internal stakeholders of CAL FIRE, Ag Commissioner, OES, and CEO. In addition to the presenters today, we have recently expanded that stakeholder group to include Ken Graham and Jared Deck from Public Works, Sarah Jones, the Director of Placer County Resource Conservation District, Eric White from Air Pollution Control District. And we look forward to expanding this list with other key stakeholders as we proceed. Over the past several months, we've met several times to lay the groundwork for developing a landscape approach to wildfire mitigation and forest resiliency. And to best position the county for its involvement in regional policy discussions and to receive the extensive number of state and federal funding opportunities that lie ahead. We believe we have an opportunity to position Placer County to be a leader in developing a countywide landscape approach to protecting our communities, our natural resources, and our quality of life. We plan to return to your board in early two thousand twenty-three to discuss preliminary strategies and recommendations. And today we wanted to check in with your board on a few key areas such as program scale, commensurate staff and administrative resources, and community engagement on project planning and development to ensure that we are on the right track. At this point, I will turn the presentation over to Chief Estes.
Thank you, Becky. Good afternoon, Chair Gustafson, members of the board. My name is Brian Estes. I'm the State and County Fire Chief. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today on, as Becky said, a welcoming rainy day. And, and I'm here really in support of our team members here, Carrie and Josh, just to kind of set the stage a little bit and remind us all, you know, the conditions we're dealing with in our modern day foothill communities across our region. And I think it's important that while we're receiving this much needed precipitation, I, I was speaking with the media this morning about the impacts to mosquito fire due to, you know, the potential precipitation, the burn scars, debris flow, et cetera, et cetera, something that, that Andy I know is heavily, heavily involved in right now. So I think what it does is speak to not only the, when the smoke is in the air, the impacts from wildfires, but the more holistic look at the, the impacts months and months later to our landscape, to our environment, to the economic impacts, even when the rain and snow is falling. So you're going to hear a lot today about philosophies and you're, and, and, and everyone has, as we look through the media and we listen to opinions about forest health and, and fire resiliency across California. There, there are a lot of opinions and there are a lot of philosophies that, that we're trying to pinpoint. What, what I wanted to do is talk and just reinforce the things that we do know are in front of us in California. And, and one of the things you've heard me speak many times to is, is that population increase in California. And I hearken back to the last time we saw a significant drought condition in, in California in nineteen seventy-six and nineteen seventy-seven. Fast forwarding to today, we've increased the population of California by about fourteen and a half million people. And that has a direct impact on our foothill communities, not only the population increase, but the housing, the infrastructure, the road systems, the electrical infrastructure, and obviously the increased amount of ignition sources that come with that. Our number one fire cause across California and in Placer County are human caused fires. Not negligent or not necessarily intentional, but definitely human caused. We are seeing hotter and drier conditions these days. We are seeing sometimes prolonged summer events and then punctuated by these very active wet precipitation events like we're seeing right now. But as we saw yesterday, I'm sorry, last year, those precipitation vents can, can end and can easily be followed by months and months of dry winter weather. And the result of all of this, I think, is we're seeing larger and more disastrous fires as we saw with the mosquito fire this year, the largest fire in recorded Placer County history. A couple of quick, quick statistics, I'm looking at a five-year overview, and I've talked to you many times about some of these statistics and how staggering they are. But if we look at the five-year average, we, we average over seventy-eight hundred wildland fires across our state. And these statistics are jurisdictionally wide, meaning that's private, local, and federal jurisdictions. Because I think one of the themes that you're going to hear both Andy and Josh talk about today is how the impacts of fires are stretching across land ownerships and, and the infrastructure doesn't really care whose land it's on when it's burning. We average over a million acres burned across California's greater region. And if you talk about suppression, suppression repair and rehabilitation and the impact cost from wildland fires, it's almost six hundred million dollars on the average. Just in Cal, in Northern California alone, and in the region that I consider to be our localized region, we're seeing an average of about twelve hundred structures, both residential and outbuildings destroyed on the average per year. Some years have been much, much more disastrous, but that's an average. And I think it speaks to the incredible number of habitable structures and infrastructure that exists in our foothill communities. And I've showed you the graphs before to show that the most destructive and the largest wildland fires in recorded history have occurred in the last five years. So we're going to talk about suppression and prevention today. And then that's one of the very, very much volleyed topics in discussion that you hear. I, I will tell you that prevention, fuels reduction, forest management, resiliency is incredibly important. And it's becoming more and more of a focus for all the agencies. But it, but it has to work in partnership with suppression. One cannot take the place of the other. At the end of the day, the community still need to know that a robust and aggressive initial attack response is going to be there for them. As I've said before, Placer County has the highest number of habitable structures within the state responsibility area in the state. Therefore, reinforcing my devotion and commitment to that suppression model. On the other hand, Placer County residents, though, are very, very resilient and they're very responsive to the threat from wildland fire. We see, we see a tremendous amount of inquiries, not only during the fires, but even right now, wondering what the impacts of their communities debris flow, mudslides are going to be. So we've got a really, really responsive community that we work in. We've been very successful around our region in the, in obtaining grants. Over two hundred and fifty million dollars in grants have been awarded across vulnerable areas in the state over the past five years. And that's through It's okay. I thought I was, I thought I was getting the hook there for a second. I know, I know. I know, I know I always talk too long. I've been told that many, many times. And Placer County, I'm proud to say, has some of the highest amount of grant awards that we've seen in the state. We average about three pretty significant CAL FIRE grants awarded specifically right here in Placer County every year. So my commitment to you and my commitment to our team is to continue with an integrated fire protection system in Placer County. That's local, state, and federal resources combined under one mission and one team. Our focus in CAL FIRE and Placer County Fire Department will always continue to be on the protection of life, property, and infrastructure. Our fuels reduction efforts will focus on the protection of those communities, the access, the egress, and the evacuation routes and making us more resilient into the future. I'm proud to say we've averaged over ten thousand defensible space inspections on the state responsibility areas on the average over the last five years. And, and we continue to work this year on aggressive grant opportunities in concert with our strategic fire plan. And my continued commitment to our communities and the protection of the lives and property for our residents here in Placer County. So with that, before I get the hook again, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Andy Feco.
Good afternoon, board members. So I've just got two slides today because I thought it was important that we focus on sort of the, the two halves of this problem as I see it in Placer County. We've got a fuels problem in the watersheds up in our forests, and we have a fuels problem next to our communities. And those two things touch in many ways, and mosquito fire is emblematic of how those two things touch. So what I've got on the screen here is a, is a fire history map for, for Placer County. And you'll notice here a significant portion of the county has burned in the last century. And the pace of those fires has actually accelerated over the last twenty-five years or so. And so the darkest sort of purple on that map are fires that have occurred really in the last twenty years. You'll notice things like the American Fire, the Star Fire, the King Fire there, which is covered by the legend, the Ralston Fire, those are all, those have all occurred in the last twenty-five years. And have all been really quite devastating to the watershed lands in Placer County. Thankfully, those fires really didn't affect communities in the way that some of the recent fires like the River Fire in two thousand twenty-one almost did, and the mosquito fire did for, for the Forest Hill community today. Those fires in the upper watersheds have lo, what they've, what we call long tails on their impacts. So the Star Fire there was in two thousand one. Remember that because my wife and I were recently married and we moved to our new house from our old place and we moved to Forest Hill. And that Star Fire was burning just about that time. I just did at one of the PCWA facilities at Middle Fork Interbay, a sediment cleanout from that reservoir, a dredging operation last year that was a five million dollar dredging operation from that fire that occurred in two thousand one. Right? So what we're trying to do in the upper watershed in partnership with the county of Placer at our French Meadows Project is avoid the kind of fire intensity that leads to massive washouts of sediment and logs into our watershed, which is a water we all drink in Placer County. It's been, I think, a successful operation thus far. We thought we were going to test our French Meadows Project with the mosquito fire this year. Thankfully, got some rain there in late September and we didn't, the fire didn't quite reach French Meadows. But that's what we're preparing for is to reduce the intensity of the fire in the watershed, which is really what our fuels management efforts are. You're not going to stop fire starts. I think we know that. I think the difference from the earlier part of the century to what we have in the forest today is the amount of fuel that's on the ground. And so our job, as we see it, is to reduce the fuel loading in these upper watersheds, protect those watersheds from high intensity fire. It's a different task next to communities. And, and so PCWA and the county are engaged in two ways in communities. So let's talk about the River Fire as a good example. Twenty twenty-one, fire gets going one afternoon, sort of like the mosquito burns very, very quickly right up to the edge of the community of Colfax. Fire, the fire guys are on top of it. I don't know how many airplanes and helicopters were in the air. Very quickly, that could have been a very bad fire. Three water agencies involved, right? So my facilities, PCWA facilities are right at the edge of the burn. PG&E's Water Transportation Canal that's on the side of the mountain there is burned on both sides. And Nevada Irrigation District, which is on the north side of the Bear River, all those facilities get burned. Sort of big impacts to all of them. But the good news is the community of Colfax survived. So how do we figure out a way to do community protection? And I suggest that a program that's been in place with the county of Placer since two thousand thirteen is a pretty good model. The agency, because of the amount of recreation that we attract to the Middle Fork Project areas, things like rafting, things like fishermen, hunters, hikers, the endurance events, all those things take place along the Middle Fork American River. And as part of our relicensing effort, we committed with the county of Placer to harden the communities that are adjacent to the project. That includes things like Auburn, Forest Hill, Michigan Bluff, Baker Ranch. And so since two thousand thirteen, the county's administered through funding from the Middle Fork Project, essentially a grant program for fire departments and the community, things like, help me with the name, Luanna, Luanna was, yeah. Thank you. So, so those, those grants, which are essentially fund fuels reduction efforts on private lands. And so typically, what Luanna Dowling would do up in Forest Hill and Michigan Bluff, for instance, was she would go talk to neighbors and they, she would get a group of neighbors together and they would assemble a project along the edge of the community. They'd hire con, local contractors and leverage the money that the county would grant with, I think it's a sixty percent match from state and federal funds. They put that money together, hire contractors, and help those homeowners do a fire-wise sort of protection project on their lands. I think that's a good model. I'm suggest it could be spread to other parts of the county. I think it's something that, that residents are really aware of, which brings me to this slide. So we helped with some polling in two thousand twenty-one. Small part, we played in it, but the Nature Conservancy did some polling statewide. And so this is statewide polling. So you got to remember, this is people in urban areas. This is people all over the state, not just in Placer County. So as you look at these, keep in mind how our citizens might look at the same issue. But these are overwhelming numbers for folks that, you know, eighty-five percent of respondents rate wildfires as a serious problem, right? So what does that tell you statewide? People don't want to breathe wildfire smoke, and everyone in the state's breathing wildfire smoke, right? Sixty-seven percent, so over two-thirds, we're doing too little to address catastrophic wildfire risk. You know, eighty-three percent believe we need to invest more in forest management. And seventy-one percent think we should have incentives for community fire resilience. So all of those results are both the two problems I laid out. One, which is the forest that all Californians love to recreate in, that is their water supply, and it's the community stuff. So I think we have broad social sort of license in this county, and I think we have the resources to help with both of these problems, if we put our mind to it. And I think that the partnership model that we've established with the county and the agency and CAL FIRE, and now I think with the RCD, is, is a critical way that we can move forward on both the watershed work as well as the community protection work. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Hunsinger.
Thanks, Andy. Josh Hunsinger, Placer County Agricultural Commissioner. It's a pleasure to be with you today. So I don't want to belabor the mosquito fire anymore. Your, your board's very aware, and I think our community is very aware of the impacts of the mosquito fire. But just a couple of things, just to reiterate, I think we, we, as Andy said so well, focus on that initial impact and the initial suppression, but then there's those long-lasting impacts. And then there's also those kind of tangential associated impacts. And just, so a couple, you know, a couple of points I wanted to mention within that is, you know, beyond the homes that are lost, acreage that's burned, those longer-term impacts. You may be aware that our Economic Development Department in, in cooperation with a professor from University of Nevada Reno, as well as GSEC, is starting, embarking on a study to really capture the full economic impact of the mosquito fire on Placer County at large. And so I think that study is going to be available in the first quarter of next year. And we'll come to your board at that point. So we're studying that. Another interesting point that hasn't been mentioned is I think there's some studies coming out about the impact of wildfire relative to carbon and you know, the state's been very aggressive in passing new regulations over the last however many years to reduce the, the amount of carbon in the atmosphere. And the studies that I've seen recently say that, that all of those gains from those regulations have been basically erased by these last couple of years of wildfire. So just, it, you know, it's not just that initial threat to homes, threat to lives, but there's that, that larger impact as well beyond that acute initial. And so let me jump into this a little bit. I just thought it would be important to put some of these names. I know we talk about, you know, as, as Chief Estes mentioned, just the number of homes we have in the wildland urban interface and how high it is here in Placer County. But just throwing some of those communities up here, I, I just, I think it's important to look at the names and to recognize these communities. And these, this is not a comprehensive list. We have many, many more rural communities here in Placer County within that area that could potentially be affected by catastrophic wildfire. Some other, some other factors here more along the economic front. I did a little bit of research. There's actually a study that came out and was updated in two thousand twenty-two that looked at the total economic impact of Interstate eighty as infrastructure, as a resource. And they determined that the, the value per mile in commerce, the United States, about eighteen million dollars a mile. And so when you factor the amount of Interstate eighty above Auburn and Placer County, that comes out to a nine hundred ninety million dollar annual economic impact from trade traveling over Interstate eighty. And obviously in that same corridor, we have the Union Pacific Railroad and Kinder Morgan Petroleum Pipeline, which are also key infrastructure. Our ski resorts, this is a two thousand fourteen study. It's a little out of date and it does cover the whole Tahoe base and not just Placer County, but five hundred and sixty-four million dollars in total economic activity up there. Our transit occupancy tax revenue from tourism. Just, you know, there's many, many Just, you know, there's many, many different things that depend on us having healthy forests, healthy environments, and that catastrophic wildfire can impact. Obviously, our water quality and availability, as Andy said so well, hydroelectric generation and our Middle Fork Project, outdoor recreation just as a whole. And certainly there's an awful lot of that that occurs on the Forest Hill Divide as well as, as in the Tahoe Basin and along the Interstate eighty corridor. And then that, that matter of carbon. So I'm going to get into a bunch of good news here, and that's, that's the great part. The first one is that the governor has commissioned this wildfire and forest resiliency task force. And Chief Estes, I think, you know, early on issued us really good advice, which was it makes a lot of sense for Placer County to try to to look, take a close look at this state, you know, the state is basically creating a roadmap that we can follow. And they're making it very clear what their priorities and expectations are, and so that we can follow those and position ourselves well to pursue funding opportunities. And so I had the privilege of attending the task force meeting up in Nevada County on September twenty seventh, so just a couple of months ago. And that was a great event. And, you know, these are some of the takeaways I took that, you know, what the state is interested in is this bigger scale, faster pace, doing more and doing it soon, not, not waiting around. Building overall capacity, and I think that's what we're talking about today, is building that capacity to get this work done and creating a pipeline of projects. It's not do one project, finish it before we move on to the next one. Have a series of, of projects lined up as well as simultaneous action, working on multiple projects at once. Prioritization, prioritization of work. And I think that's a really interesting thing, aspect to look at, just because one person's priorities might be different from another person's priorities. Somebody might be really focused on tourism while another person's focused on wildlife habitat or natural resource protection. You know, economic issues. So really, I think it's going to be super important as we, as we move farther into this process, really look at stakeholder engagement, community engagement to really determine what your priorities as a board are for future projects and what the community priorities are as well. And then alignment, you know, we're already having conversations with El Dorado County, with Nevada County. Obviously, our French Meadows Project has served as this, as this model for the state and how to work across agencies, jurisdictions, nonprofits, federal government, state government, local government. And that's really something the state's emphasizing as well as, as, you know, these wildfires don't recognize jurisdictional boundaries. And then one I really love, and I know Robert, it's something we've talked about, is the, and they, they actually put this as a goal is a couple of cutting edge science with indigenous knowledge. And if you go back in time about, you know, a little over a hundred years, you'll see that, or yeah, just a little over a hundred years, you'll see that there was a lot of conversation early on in the birth of the Forest Service about Native American controlled burns, basically to manage the forests via healthy fire. And what goes around, comes around, people are finally waking up to those, those folks way back when knew all along the right way to manage the forest. And so that's, that's pretty neat to see. And then, you know, this overall theme of landscape level work, so, so not working on small projects, but looking at it as a, in a more holistic view of, you know, a whole watershed or a whole county approach, or, you know, a larger approach. So along these lines, just keep in mind, Placer County is part of a much larger statewide effort. And so they've also published some of these pillars of resilience, and this is not a comprehensive list, but some of the things the state is looking at are forest resilience and so healthy forests, biodiversity, protecting our natural resources, water security, certainly. So happy it's raining today. I can't tell you. Economic diversity as well, and then social and cultural well being. And that's really the, the quality of life of all Placer County residents. That's that, you know, the, the, the average citizen in Roseville or Lincoln or Rockland may not be threatened directly in their home, but they sure have to breathe that air when these fires are going on, as we're all well, well aware. So so on, you know, continuing on the good news slides, we have a lot of, of great assets here in Placer County. We have state, federal and private partners and existing robust partnerships. We have the governor's task force. We have state and federal funding. I'm going to get into some slides, which are in a second, which are almost overwhelming in the number of different funding sources that are out there right now. We have state and elected, federal elected representatives who get it. They're on board. They realize the priority this is. So it's, it's, it's a, it's an opportune time to be working in this area. It's not an uphill battle to convince people that catastrophic wildfires are an important issue. And then we do have existing qualified contractors here in Placer County to actually do this work out in the field. So I have about five slides here. I'm not going to go through every one of these details, but the thing I want to take you through as I slowly scroll through these, when, when Carrie put this information together, I found it overwhelming. Just, I'm going to slowly just click through these and you can just briefly scan them. But in some cases, billions of dollars of funding out there, hundreds of millions, billions of dollars of funding. These are all state funds and then federal funding opportunities. And not all of them are equally applicable to Placer County. Some of them obviously are nationwide. But it, it just speaks to just the amount of opportunity out there if, if we do want to pursue funding for our projects. So let me jump ahead, catch up with my notes. Briefly. So challenges, we're, we're not without our challenges, you know, I think number one is, is planning and development of priorities. That's, you know, we can't do work if we don't have well planned projects that are identified and prioritized. The environmental review is a, is a big issue, you know, that's the CEQA and NEPA work. And just, you know, and, and speaking with Andy, the early days of the French Meadows Project, there about a one point eight million dollars had to be fronted, fronted for the CEQA and NEPA work to get that project off the ground. So just to give you an idea of, of what kind of magnitude that is. You know, obviously pursuing that funding and then managing that funding and applying it through contractors to the ground. Policy, there's, there's so much to do around policy, whether it's ensuring that legislation keeps that funding available, you know, this isn't a one or a two year thing. This is probably a decade or more type of effort. Labor and cultivating, you know, an additional labor force, if we do increase this pace and scale, we'll need more folks to do the work. Skilled workforce and then all of the trucks, truck drivers, heavy equipment, all of that stuff as well. And then infrastructure, what do we do with all this material that's coming out of the woods as well? Whether it's a woody biomass disposal, sawmills, other types of things that have a beneficial utilization of that biomass that's coming out of the woods. And then US Forest Service Engagement, as you're all aware, Placer County, about forty percent of the landmass of Placer County is, is federal land. And US Forest Service, we've proved through our, our French Meadows Project that the US Forest Service can be a fantastic partner. And so maintaining and, and, and increasing that engagement with the US Forest Service to make sure we're working well together and getting those projects done that need to be done, even when they're on Forest Service land, just continuing that positive working relationship that we have. And so with that, we reached the last slide. And so this is the question, you know, right now, Resource Conservation District, Cal Fire, Placer County, our various partners, we're doing thousands of acres a year right now. And, and that, that's great, but that pace is not, I think, going to get us to the point that maybe we want to get to or need to get to. And so it's kind of that question of is we're doing thousands of acres, do we need to be doing tens of thousands of acres a year? And then if it is tens of thousands of acres a year, what would it take to get there? There's staff capacity that we need. There's and, and the staff capacities needs to do a variety of things, legislative and policy advocacy, as I mentioned. The pursuit of funding and then the management of those funds to actually implement projects and ensure that community engagement is occurring as well. And so there's no shortage of work to do here. We're thrilled to be working in this space, Carrie and I, every day. It's, it's just an exciting place to be. I thank you for the opportunity to do that. I thank you for the opportunity to, for us all to present today. And I'll turn it back to your board for any questions or discussion.
Thanks, Josh. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate all the others that are here in backup position who haven't spoken yet, too. Thanks for being here. Board members, are there questions you have or thoughts you have? I can lead off if you want me to, or, okay, I usually wait till the end. But last Friday I attended, I serve on a nonprofit board called the Tahoe Fund and had a great presentation on land tender as a tool. And I know you're, you're all familiar with it, but my fellow board members might not be. So here's a nonprofit that had seeded some of the work up for land tender. And the technology is I'm going to forget the terminology for the technology, who knows? It's a mapping tool. G I S? Yeah, it's G I S, but it's also some other, gosh, forgetting. Anyway, the map, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, I can't remember the name. I mean, I can grab it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what we're, we're searching for, but it's an interactive mapping program that brings not just locational data that G I S is so good at doing, but also brings in the community. It, it provides a tool and a mechanism for talking about priorities. It creates different scenarios based on those priorities, so you can actually weigh and value different benefits.
Types of forests, the age of the forest, as well as the assets, the infrastructure. I mean, you layer all those and then also into the demographics of need in a community, which communities can afford to do more of their own, which communities need more help. In the end, they've done the Tahoe Basin and basically they started with what would appear to be a seven to eight hundred million dollar effort to thin all the forests and treat all the forests. And they were able through looking at the assets and the vulnerabilities with the special districts, with all the vulnerable communities, getting that down to sixty or seventy million, which targets, it's not going to treat everything, but it's going to target the best protection possible. And I was so impressed with the technology and so impressed, I forgot the name and how they do that. But the mapping and the, the layers that you could bring in for the fire districts, for the communities, for those demographics of where we need to fund, I thought was incredibly powerful. And to think about doing that for our county in a way that then directs our efforts, because otherwise we have all these different groups just jumping for every grant and every bit of money, and they may not make sense. I mean, we want to hit the most the most vulnerability areas and the highest source of potential. And how do we treat those areas and do it effectively and, and, and channel our resources? So we're not out all competing against each other. So I think that's, I'm preaching to the choir. The other thing that we've done through that nonprofit is fund technology and assisting with the sawmill in Carson City, a new sawmill and potential for reinvestment in biomass with that, some of the nonprofit dollars. And maybe more importantly, we funded thirty four full ride scholarships to Lake Tahoe Community College for Forest Service workers to train people to get into forestry. So I, I, we've done amazing things with not all that much money. And I just, I share that because I think it's a combination of getting more people in the field that are educated. It's knowing what we need to do. And that I tell you, as an elected official, looking at that map and being told this is where you need to spend your money, it's way easier for me to go and try to secure those money, monies and to show that sort of program. I'm sure there's other programs. I don't want to just one proprietary program. But boy, was that fascinating. I'd love to, for the board to see it. You know, I was like, oh, my gosh, I want to bring this and, and map our whole county, especially our foothill communities to really target those critical water infrastructure, pipelines, highways, hospitals, schools, forests, communities. I mean, it was really incredible. So I'd love to see, you know, and I think that's where you're headed is where do we start? And how do we identify that? French Meadows has been a huge success because we had a targeted area that we had a reason to go treat. But when we look at protecting our communities, we also need to look at those areas surrounding our communities and what is going to best protect those communities. And so I'm fully supportive of trying to get additional funding and putting, you know, investing our county funds into getting that down to tell our case. It isn't just hiring staff to go out and lobby. We need data. We need information so we can make that compelling case. Having been on that side of things for a lot of my life, you have to make that compelling case and have that information. So I really support that, those efforts. I don't know who went first, Robert or Jim? Jim, you want to go first?
Sure.
Robert?
I'm sure there's plenty of vulnerability throughout the region. And I'm sure that both Cal Fire and the Water Agency and the Forest Service, they know where those vulnerabilities are and what needs to be done. The problem is the resources. We have the people and we have the funding to do that to attack it. So you're aware of it. I'm sure that you try to do the best you can, but without the resources that we need, it's kind of futile. So I think that's what we should work, work on is get, getting more resources when we're back in DC. We need to talk to the US Forest Service about what we need to do to help resolve this issue.
Yes, great presentation. Thanks, Tali. If I was a young supervisor, this would be something that would be of intense interest to me, but as we know, I'm old and retiring supervisor. But I even brought some, some show, show and tell here and just some perspective for my last tour on this issue. So way back when I was real young and I went away to college in Southern California, probably the biggest environmental slash health issue in Southern California was air quality. And it was disgusting. And I lived through it and I read a lot about it. And there was really no solution known at that time as to how to deal with it. But they knew where the emissions were coming from, which was mostly transportation, mostly automobiles in Southern California. So the result really was the amendment to the Clean Air Act and not even knowing what the technology would be to resolve that issue. But as Air Pollution Control District has been one of my committee assignments over these last twenty eight years, I now know that gasoline automobiles in this state now are like almost ninety percent cleaner than they were when I was back in Southern California. And I've been back down to Southern California and the air quality down there is as dramatically different as night and day. So when I look at this issue now, I believe that firmly there is strong scientific consensus that points to the fact that the problem with these catastrophic wildfires is predominantly a lack of management over a hundred year period. So that there's just a huge amount of public lands that need to be managed differently. So that's, it's daunting to think about the investment that needs to go into that. And then there's the politics behind all of that was also provocative. But in terms of show and tell, I think Josh mentioned this. One article that recently came out, Stanford study, it says, indicates California's greenhouse gas reductions since two thousand and three have been wiped out by the twenty twenty fires. And from a health perspective, Stanford Research finds that wildfire smoke is unraveling decades of air quality gains, exposing millions of Americans to extreme pollution levels. Taking me back to my college days in Southern California. And if you just do some back of the envelope numbers in California, in the Western United States, there's, if my research is correct, something like thirty three million acres of publicly owned, mostly national forest land in California. And if, if all of it needed to be treated, to, to do that, it would cost about as much as it's going to cost to build a bullet train, which is getting about twenty five percent of our cap and trade monies. Based on, as I understand it, from everybody I talked to, both staff and others, there have been no studies to indicate what the emission reductions are going to be from the construction of the bullet train. We can, particularly in Placer County, with our technology led by our local air pollution control district, calculate the massive greenhouse gas emissions that are caused by catastrophic forest fires. So if you can fix that, you can add to the list of benefits, healthier air, but also dramatic reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. So on the pessimistic side of this, if you, regardless of where you were politically and love the massive amounts of federal monies that have been spent since the CARES Act about five years ago, leading all the way up to the Inflation Reduction Act, that amount by way of county execs office and our lobbyist turns out to be about eight point six. Uh that amount uh by way of county execs office and our lobbyist uh turns out to be about eight point six uh trillion dollars. Which is a big number in Excel spreadsheet and. Uh the Forest Service is targeted specifically about point three percent of that a month, that money. Uh which that's a big number, twenty six point two uh billion dollars. But uh nothing like if you replicated the Western United States, which has almost six hundred uh million acres of public lands on it. Much of which needs to be treated. So uh. Interestingly, I'm optimistic that things that I've enjoyed most in the county have been the innovative entrepreneurial things. Starting with nothing for which I've received any credit, but our Department of Health and Human Services, which is it's just an innovative approach. That's based on a simple idea, but the components of it are very complicated and it's still a work in progress. But but I think here, uh if I look around this room, we just have incredible partnerships and resources and the ability to bring people together. Uh what the federal expenditures that have been targeted tell me is that there is a lack of federal and state. Leadership really identifying the fact that people are just sick and tired of breathing um. Smokey air for two to four months now every summer, and more importantly, their kids having to do that. Um not to mention the greenhouse gas emissions, uh where some like to argue that nothing can be done, wring their hands. Uh but I think what we can do here is actually do some meaningful investments and bring together some partners. Uh that really will take forward an innovative approach and study the impact of treated forest after far. Horsefire burns take for those arguments. Um be- because to me, it's it's a grand um. Investment that needs massive public investment. I am a huge uh proponent of our national forest system and our national parks and public lands. And I think it's something that's um uh especially American, but we need to do more to take care of it. So I I just encourage you all to keep uh going forward with your work and I think you've got some great players, some great resources. And I'll be paying attention from the sideline.
Other comments or questions? Well, I think um staff was looking for some direction on additional staffing or resources uh to potentially bring to bear on this, if I'm correct. And so when when I look at this, as I mentioned, whether it's land tender or anything else, taking off our hats of particular ownership. And looking at the vulnerabilities so that we can really target our assets to the types of things that will be compelling. For those in state and federal offices. Um I think that's a really helpful tool for any of us. And so if you're existing, uh maps can cross those boundaries and layer upon layer uh the way this one was. Uh because what was great is that they could model while we were sitting there and say, hey, we want to protect the Kings Beach community. And because we're looking at the demographics of that community and looking at where they need to assist or Forest Hill or whatever. And and it took off those maps of, hey, this is state responsibility area. This is federal responsibility. This is private. Um but let's target this swath and here's what it would cost approximately. And that is a really useful tool to show uh those folks. That might be different than other areas when they're going back to lobby. The more more data we can bring, I think the more helpful it is. That's. At least as one decision maker, I know that is really pers- persuasive to me when we're when we've done the homework here. So what can we do? And Becky's back up at the microphone.
Well, and nothing specifically to request of your board at this point, but I think we just wanted to hear those type types of of comments that you just provided. As I mentioned earlier, we do intend to return to your board in early twenty twenty three, and I think with some of those preliminary. Uh recommendations um and investment um recommendations to include potentially software modeling investments. Um that uh will put us on that path. So if you had specific recommendations for us, we're happy to receive those, but otherwise we'll continue down that path.
Yeah, ask a question in regards to the modeling. So is that something that we've looked at? And I would guess it's probably not necessarily cheap, but just curious.
Yeah, we have looked at that. We've gotten a couple of different presentations. If you um if you look at it from soup to nuts. Which would include facilitated public engagement, multiple meetings with different stakeholders to weigh the different values and and benefits and priorities. Um it could be anywhere from five to seven hundred thousand dollars for the entire process. That includes selecting and um procuring all the data, normalizing it so that it can be used in this. Um software system and then kicking out uh the ability to to have this real time discussion with different groups. To try to get to scenarios that people can agree upon for funding.
That's over a five year period.
Yeah, so you know, a five year period, right, which great to have a tool. And and we need to include the community and get their input. At the same time, we know we have issues and we also know we have state and federal dollars that we can go after. So I would say, yes, um important to do that, but also we can't do that at the exclusion of. The work that you're doing already, right, which is what resources do we have? What infrastructure do we need to protect? I mean, you know enough that you like with French Meadows, you've done that work, right? So I think that modeling is would be terrific, but not stopping the work. Because the money is there and the need is there. Right. I I I totally agree. I didn't mean to do it at the exclusion of and how much community involvement, how much can our staff? Take on that community involvement. Um I know in the in the, at least in the Tahoe Basin, it was the fire districts primarily. As well as uh state and local officials that provided the input on the assets. Uh certainly, the community has has values too that need to be considered, but the great thing about baseline on the tool is that people can. Then play with the tool and basically it's being made available for that. So uh yes.
I've seen it uh presented as a phased approach also where, you know, what, once you have the data, which we have, it's a matter of just pulling it together, compiling it. You know, you can look at those things, the the that rise to the top immediately, the things that we do already know that are pretty easy to agree upon for various reasons. And then, you know, you can back that up over time with more of the uh the community engagement. And the reason, the partial partial reason for a five year timeframe is it's really um. Uh what do you call it? Like a subscription service. And so some of that funding, you will have done all the work upfront. But then as you want to relook or as things change, like we'd want to build in the impacts of the mosquito fire, for example, on those seventy seven thousand acres. And so that we'd have to rerun some models presumably so that some of that costs tails off over the those later years to accommodate for updating.
Carrie, can you also build out from the communities? In other words, we know we want to protect. Our our goal as the county is to protect our communities. Other agencies might have other goals, right? So if if we can build out kind of, I think of it as concentric circles, you know, that we keep spreading out. Uh to make sure that we're protecting homes, businesses, lives.
Exactly, and I I I don't want to speak for Mary who's in the audience here, but I do know that uh that the Forest Service. Uh I think both Tahoe National Forest and the Lake Tahoe Basin Management Unit are looking at the use of land tender or may already have started. Using this particular tool to do uh prioritizing within the federal lands. And so, you know, as more of us may have access to this tool, we can start bringing knitting those different priorities together and and into a full plan.
Jane.
Certainly, thank you. Uh just a few comments. Outstanding presentation, truly. The multi-disciplinary insights from the presenting team are incredibly important to Plaster's future. Separate and apart from the air quality, the need to safeguard our water. The importance of preserving our forests. Interestingly enough, if we're looking at getting federal attention, as we discussed in a call. Pre- prior to this presentation, I think an ounce of prevention, when it comes to funding, you need to look at the opportunity cost of not doing it. And the ounce of prevention is worth a hundred and fifty million dollar suppression cost of cure. So that's there's that's certainly an argument that can be made. Interestingly enough, too, for Placer County. It disrupts things like Interstate eighty, which according to a study completed by the Washington Post this past summer. Is the most valuable interstate in the entire country. At an average value per mile of twenty two point two million, as measured by the value of trade related activity along the route. So we've got a lot of arguments to make to be effective and compelling and advocating for more resources on this front.
Thank you, Jane. Any other further comments? I do want to open this up to any public comments on this item. If there's any members of the public either here in the room or online that would like to address the board on this. Great. Well, thank you for a really well done presentation. I know we're working on biomass. I know we're working on other efforts. Yes. And uh we want to pursue all those. I'm really interested in the in the North Star uh example that they're working on with biomass to heat. Directly, and I I think there's just a lot of exciting things going on in Placer County can really be a leader in this area. So thanks to all of the brain power in this room helping us get there. Okay, thank you. And with that, I think we are going back to closed session. County Council.
The board will adjourn again to close session for uh with the last remaining item for today, which is public employment, county executive officer.
Hey, good afternoon. The board has returned from closed session and county council will give our report.
The board met in closed session to consider the item of public employment, county executive officer. The board heard a report. The board has directed by a five zero vote. To prepare a contract to be presented in open session on November the twenty ninth. For the employment of Jane Christensen as the county executive officer. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you very much, and we will thus stand adjourned.